Okay, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of February 11th of the City of Placerville City Council to order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everybody, and it looks like we have another full house. We might be on a record here of full houses over the first few meetings here in 2020, so welcome, everybody, tonight. Let's go ahead and jump in. So Regina, if you would like to, if you would call a roll.
Mayor Saragosa.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Councilmember Acuna.
Here.
Councilmember Borelli.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. A quorum established. Moving on to item three, announcements and presentations to the public. And first up, item 3.1 is a presentation from Marshall Medical Center on the El Dorado Bridge Program. Good evening.
All right, so I'm Arianna Sampson. I'm a PA and a leader in our emergency department at Marshall Medical Center, and I'm very honored to be here. Thank you, guys, for having me and listening to what we have to say tonight. I've been traveling all around the country to say what, you know, to tell people what we're doing in Placerville regarding addiction treatment, because what we're doing is quite innovative and it's working. But I realize I really haven't talked to our own city leaders about what we're doing, because it's really important to know what our model of care is and what we're doing to really serve our community. So I'm going to give kind of a real bird's eye view of what we're doing. I could talk all day about this, but I have a very short amount of time. And then, at the end, I'd like to show a video that was just released by the Department of Healthcare Services about our program. So, the big deal, you know, I think most people have heard about the opioid epidemic. You know, the opioid epidemic does not discriminate, and we have big problems in rural communities. But in 2017, overdose deaths passed fatal motor vehicle collisions. So this was, you know, in the last several years, we've had to really turn our attention, medicine-wise, to what we are doing in terms of treating opioid use disorder, opioid addiction, and really our prescribing habits as well. We've really taken an inward look at how we can make a big difference in people's lives, especially people who are, you know, who are suffering from opioid use disorder. It's hard for people out here to see, sorry, but what this really shows is just the scope of the problem. The big line that goes all the way up shows that there was more than 70,000 deaths in 2017 from overdoses. The smaller line shows that 20, more than 28,000 of those were related to fentanyl or these synthetic opioids. All those little words that come down, those are the peak deaths of, the lowest one was peak gun deaths. The middle one was peak HIV deaths. So, you know, you can really see, you know, the scope of our problem than, you know, motor vehicle collision deaths. So we really, you know, the scope of this problem is huge. There's been three waves amid. So I think what's important to know in this slide is that we see a lot of synthetic opioids being the problem now. So fentanyl has gotten out into what people think are pills they may be buying on the street, and it's fentanyl, and it's caused a lot of overdoses. But also, just prescribed opioids have caused a lot of deaths, and those have outnumbered heroin deaths. So what we're doing at Marshall is we are treating with evidence-based medicine. So we, just like any other medical problem that we treat, we look at what the medical evidence is, and we treat with that so that we can save lives. So treating addiction as a moral failing does not work, and so we are trying to change culture and change medicine, because what we're doing is working. We are treating addiction as a chronic disease that requires medical treatment. So treating addiction as a chronic medical condition, we can change lives, we can decrease infectious diseases, decrease crime, we can decrease, of course, overdose deaths. And really, our goal of treatment is to get people back to function in their lives. So addiction looks a lot like this. So, you know, people get high, then come down and feel normal, and at some point, there is this, you know, these waves where you get tolerance, physical dependence, and a lot of people are, at that point, just trying to feel normal. So we treat with medications to help people feel normal and get their lives back. We treat in our emergency department. Why? Because we've always had people with substance use disorders in our emergency department. So the use of drugs goes back, you know, 8,000 before Christ. People have used drugs for a long time. We are trying to treat drug-related problems from our emergency department, because we are the place that finds, you know, people with substance use disorders that's possibly caused them to be in the ER, or they're just seeking treatment. And we want to be prepared and have a program that really serves our patients in an evidence-based way. So we took this, this is an article, actually, the author of this article is asking us to write about what we're doing in Placerville, but she's from Yale, Gail DiNofrio, and she did a study that found that if we treat with medication and referral to treatment in the emergency department, we double a patient's likelihood of being in treatment at one month as compared to just referral alone. So that sort of changed everything. So we are, you know, we take a three-pronged approach. We're trying to avoid chronic opioid starts. We treat addiction when present, and we try, we also have a program to prevent overdose by trying to distribute Narcan. Narcan is what reduces, what reverses overdoses. So for all of this work that we're doing, we've, there's been some attention on what we're doing, because it's working. So actually, we've had some reporters come to our town and, you know, see what we're doing at Marshall in the emergency department. This is Vox, and I really, the title sort of speaks to what we're doing. So most ERs don't offer addiction treatment, but California's changing that, and specifically, Placerville's changing that. We are now part of this California Bridge Program that is actually funded from some federal grant dollars. We are the only rural hospital that is considered a star site, so we are the site that other rural hospitals are trying to look at in terms of what they can do. And we have 52 sites across the state, and these are like, you know, UCSF, UC San Diego, Scripps, Cottage, like, a lot of the big names in medicine are a part of our program. In the top three programs, so UCSF, we're actually top four, UCSF, Highland Hospital, UC Davis, and Marshall Hospital, we're the top four in terms of the model of care that we are, you know, that we are able to talk to others about. Seeing is believing, so in a matter of eight months, there's a lot of states who tried to, you know, who came up with programs, treated very few patients. Our program as a whole in California, just in a matter of eight months, treated more than 5,000 patients. We referred, you know, we referred, I think it was more than 4,000 to care, and we had about a 65% follow-up rate across the state. But in Placerville, we like to say, this is actually a picture I took last year when it snowed. But, you know, I'm a resident here. I live, I live walking distance from here. My kids are going to meet here afterwards. And so what we're doing here is actually kind of special, because we've made some big community bonds that we think is going to change the world. So this, I just got this data. I spent the last week looking back at every single, every single patient that we treated, and just to really get good data that I'm actually speaking to a hospital association about tomorrow. But 119 patients in the year 2000 that we treated with opioid use disorder, we have a 97% follow-up rate. So the state average was 65%, but we have a 97% follow-up rate. 82% of our patients were still in treatment at one month, and out of all the patients we treated in 2019 through our emergency department, 65% are still in treatment. And a lot of that is actually related to the clinics, two clinics we've, we refer to, and the Marshall Cares Clinic, actually, Dr. Lonnie J. is right here. Yeah. Is here from the Marshall Cares Clinic, and you'll see her in the video after. And then, the El Dorado Community Health Center Steps Clinic. These are the two programs that we refer to. And so what's going on in the state and our county? So the graph on the left, there's the red, the red counties are counties that have very high opioid overdose rates, and some of those counties actually look like, you know, like places in West Virginia and places that you actually hear about in terms of there being an opioid, you know, in terms of the opioid epidemic. El Dorado County is featured to the right. And what I'm happy to say is that since 2016, from 2016 to 2018, and in those years we initiated our emergency department program, we have a 24% decrease in opioid overdose deaths. So that's a really, I mean, these things can change, and so we are always, we have our eye on the prize. We're always trying to look at how we can better people's lives and we can save lives, but right now, it's working. This is, like, he hates it when I show this picture. This is our Substance Use Navigator, Eric Hill. So the other thing that we did is we, we know that human connection is a big part of treatment as well, and so we have a, an individual, Eric Hill, in our emergency department that is there, so he can meet people where they're at, help connect them to treatment, and he really also helps connect all of our community partners. So he goes out with our homeless outreach team. I've actually gone out there with them. You know, we're pretty tied into our community resources, just so we can, you know, we can make sure we're doing the best thing for our patients. And, you know, we advertise it. People are always shocked by this, but we, what we want to do is create a safe environment so people feel comfortable disclosing that they may have a substance use disorder, so we can effectively treat them. We've been in a lot of publications, one that it was, we were in the New York Times maybe a little more than a year ago, and I had a really hard time finding the New York Times, actually, here in Placerville. It was the front page news, but Marshall was, was mentioned in there. Vox, Herman Lopez, came out here and did an article and really featured what Marshall was doing, and Politico also has done, done a report on what we're doing. We've also been in NPR and some other publications. And this is what community treatment looks like. This is our last, that was the last homeless outreach team event, and it was really amazing to see all the partners in the community coming together, including Placerville Police, and, you know, really what kind of changes this can make in a community. But it really is making a difference, and, you know, what we're doing is being seen by the rest of the country as innovative and, and really about the community. I just spoke at, in Washington DC, maybe a week ago or a week and a half ago, about what we're doing at the National Council on Behavioral Health, and what people say can only be done in large centers like Yale and Harvard. They actually had us call and tell them what we're doing here in Placerville. So I really wanted just to educate you guys on what the model of treatment is and what we're doing to better the lives of people in our community. And there's a video that was just put together.
I had precolampsia during my pregnancy, and I had went to the ER locally, and as soon as I told them I was on methadone, instantly, everything changed. Their whole demeanor changes towards me.
Jenna Lewis said she felt rejected by the medical team she counted on to help her. It's a painful bias experienced by many battling opioid use disorder. They avoid seeking medical attention to avoid judgment.
You know, most, most nurses, they, and people don't understand. They think, well, why doesn't she just stop using? Most women that I know in their addiction stay out there, and they don't get OB care. And their babies are born addicted to street drugs. I wanted to change my life. I just didn't know how.
Until last year, when she gave birth at Marshall Medical Center in Placerville, California, a hospital treating patients for opioid addiction by offering several FDA-approved drugs scientifically proven to eliminate the symptoms of opioid withdrawal and cravings. It's called MAT, or medication for addiction treatment, and it works.
Of course, this is what we should do. This is what we do with every other chronic disease we treat in our emergency department. We use evidence-based medicine, and we treat them with everything we can and give them really good referral.
A referral to outpatient treatment services at the Marshall Cares Clinic, conveniently located down the street. The staff here provide MAT medication and so much more.
We've sort of been doing our rounds to educate and share our perspective and share what is standard of care treatment for these patients with the different parts of the hospitals, and more closely working in collaboration with the different provider teams as patients move through their hospital for different care.
Many providers now administer medication for addiction treatment, and they have another resource. They can contact Eric Hill, who fills a unique role. He's a substance use navigator and acts as a link between the Marshall Cares Clinic, the medical staff, and patients.
I come into the hospital, and I have a list of referrals from doctors, nurses, case managers, and other hospital staff, whether it's from the emergency department or the inpatient side, ICU, birth center, and the fact that they're grasping onto this idea of actually helping these people instead of discarding these people is huge.
It was a labor and delivery nurse who contacted Eric about Jenna Lewis, who, she suspected, struggled with opioid addiction. Eric met with Jenna, who confirmed her struggle, and then Eric called Dr. Lonnie J.
She came in and she, she told me, Jennifer, what you have is a disease. And me and my husband just looked at her, and she said, do you want to get that under control?
There was an opportunity for a new path for her, but she needed medical intervention while she was there in the hospital to be able to get there.
I was scared to death, but I seen the trust and the faith she had in me. She built me up. She absolutely built me up. She went away for about, I don't know, an hour, and she came back with this handwritten plan. When I left the hospital, we had my prescription in our hand before we left Placer County. It's a transformative moment, right? It's a moment in your life where you come to somebody and you say, I've got your back. You know, I've got great medicine that's going to help you. I have a plan for you. I have somewhere for you to go, a set appointment time for you tomorrow. That feels good.
So much of medicine, we don't really get wins out of it. You know, we stabilize blood pressure, we stabilize diabetes, but seeing someone who's struggling so significantly, and they don't know their way out, and we stabilize them on medication, and they come in to see me the next day and say, I feel normal again. That's such a huge win.
The fact that they treated me like a human being, an adult, and actually were caring and put away, put aside their own opinions, and just focused on the medical situation there and got to know me as a person, it made all the difference in the world, because I'm clean today.
I'm very grateful for the people who did that video, too, because it's, the Public Health Institute, which is an international organization, used that as their spot of, like, hope to inspire people just on Friday, when the Department of Healthcare Services released it. So it's, you know, it's inspiring care. Dr. Lonnie J. is doing it, our El Dorado Community Health Center as well. So are there any questions?
Well, thank you so much for the presentation and for all the incredible work that you're doing in the community, Dr. J. as well. I don't know, Dr. J., if you wanted, if there's anything you wanted to say?
Arianna's so good at speaking. I don't know if I have anything else to add, except that I, I'm a primary care provider. I was doing a family medicine practice, and a year ago, I left to create Marshall Cares Clinic that's focusing on substance use disorders, because no one in Placerville was doing this. And we have not stopped running. There is such a need. We already need to expand. There is so much more need for another provider, more staff, because patients need this medical care. It's just really, I guess I shouldn't be surprised that there's just been this hole in this need for care. And I, I love my job. People ask me, you know, all right, do you miss primary care? Do you miss family medicine? But this is such an amazing opportunity to, to help stabilize people, that I, I love my job.
Thank you. Questions from council? Comments?
No, I just appreciate this whole, learning about this whole program. I had no idea, and you certainly educated me, and I'm sure a lot of, thank goodness we have a full audience. So thank you so much.
In my full-time job, I, I, we, of course, I own Robinson's Pharmacy, and we have worked closely with the MAT program, and mostly in working with patients, make sure they have access to the medication and a method to get them started and get them over some of the initial financial hurdles, and, and it's been a real privilege to work with you, both of you. And I know my staff really appreciates how, what professional it is, and the way that you take care of some of the most challenging patients in our community, as well as just everyday people who are struggling with these issues. And a lot of people who are in that addiction phase are not there, you know, because they went out and sought the drugs, because they were, a lot of them are being treated for real, real issues that they're dealing with in their life. And this moves them out of that addiction and into a much, I guess, a better way of treating their, their pain and their challenges that they're having. So I'm proud to be a part of this. I appreciate you guys educating, because this is, this is a little-known gem for our community that just truly is saving people's lives, saving families, and saving people who are in a, in a direction that is challenging. So I'm real proud of what you guys are doing, and I know Marshall Hospital is proud of what you guys are doing, and it's the national recognition. I've heard it from other sources outside of this, this town, and it's just, it's something really special to have here. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your guidance.
Thank you, Dennis. I had one question, actually. Are you working with the hot team? Is there collaboration there in terms of when we're dealing with our homeless community in the area?
There is, yeah. Do you want to take it? Do you know more with Eric?
Yeah, so our Substance Use Navigator is very tightly tied into what they're doing, and they bring us patients in the emergency department, and they also will connect patients with, with Eric, who can, you know, find a place for, for patients to land, to get their treatment for their substance use disorder. So, yeah, and I actually did a ride along with them, and it was really transformative to see the barriers that our patients face. Actually, having boots on the ground and seeing the barriers that are out there was very humbling to me and made me think a little differently about what we can do to meet patients where they're at.
Thank you. And I think that's such a, go ahead, Doctor.
I was going to say, the goal of our clinic is to remove every barrier. And so I tell patients that if, if transportation's a barrier, if trying to meet, an appointment time is a barrier, just walk in. And so as our hot team, as people are encountering people struggling with substance use, they can come in at that moment, and my team, I have an amazing team that helps me take care of that patient in that moment. So low threshold is our model.
Yeah, and our, I just did, you know, when I was looking at those numbers, a lot of our patients did come in in the middle of the night. You know, we're 24/7 access to care. So I, when my patients come in and tell me they want help, I really congratulate them on the courage that it took to get up that morning and come see me rather than yous, and that I've got their back, and I'm going to treat them and make sure I refer them so that they can get excellent care.
And in that moment, we can capture their motivation and quickly get them connected.
Well, thank you. And I think it's just, it's just, I'm glad you brought that, or you talked to this as well, because it's such a, it's such an incredible resource that our community has. I mean, we've struggled up here to figure out how we can help also our homeless community, or those that have substance abuse problems, and where we can get the services done, and to know, because I wasn't aware of the program before as well. So the fact that we have this here is incredible. So again, thank you for all your work that you have. And I know there might even be some, some people here in the audience that might want to talk to you as well about the services that you're dealing in for the people that they're working with. So thank you.
Sure. I was going to add to that, that as people come in, we can also treat chronic illnesses like HIV and hepatitis C. We can treat infections if they're having them. We can manage their other substance use disorders. We can manage mental health conditions. So it's an opportunity for people to get connected with care, so we can further connect them with Marshall. And so this is often where it starts for people that are homeless.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to item 3.2, comments by city council, and I'll ask everyone to keep them very brief, since I know we have a full schedule ahead of us still. We'll start with Councilmember Acuna.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to thank our Public Works Department, Nick Stone, for successfully using this dry winter and getting our long overdue patch paving program done. He has been taking care of some road repairs throughout the city that have been on hold for anywhere from a year to five years or beyond. So thank you very much for getting that done. I'd like to remind everybody that we are supposed to be in the time where you're supposed to be making your property fire safe. I want to raise this issue again, because I do notice that there are some, a lot of property owners that are out there, and they are doing their due diligence. The old Sierra Golf Course, for example, a large parcel that is now in probably the best fire-safe condition it has been in in decades. You can contrast that to the Lumsden Ranch property, which is still an imminent threat and a high risk to a number of surrounding neighborhoods. So it can be done. There really isn't an excuse. And I see some long, long-proclaimed hazards being taken care of in town. So thank you to all of those, and we, as a city, need to do our due diligence to make sure that those large and small property owners do their share to make their, be good neighbors and be safe. I'd like to also thank the Placerville Police Department. I think we had every officer that was suitable for a uniform available for Coffee with a Cop last week at Lovebirds on Upper Broadway. Certainly a good showing by the crowd, and I appreciate being invited to that, and thank their work for, out in the community. And I'd also like to acknowledge the work that we've done recently, the last couple of months, with city staff. You might not have noticed it, and hopefully you didn't. Our engineering department is doing an excellent job in reminding some of our larger out-of-town contractors that they're just not welcome to come to Main Street during Christmas Week and things like that, and plug up on a job that really they had no clue. So kudos to the city manager and our city engineer for, for reaching out to that group of folks and making sure that we can get around our little town. And lastly, I'd like to congratulate Kara Taylor. She took on a number of assignments here just recently. She's now the vice chair at the El Dorado Transit Authority, and she's also the vice chair at the El Dorado Transportation Commission. So if you need to find Kara, I know where she'll be. She'll be studying. But thank you very much for stepping up, taking that.
Vice Mayor.
All right, let's see, at the, oh, we're going to talk about that later.
No, not yet.
Not yet. I have nothing for now. I'll do it later. Thank you.
Thanks. I have nothing for now.
All right. Kara?
Just a couple of quick things. I missed last meeting. I was sick. I was sick for like, two weeks. So a couple of meetings that I've been working on and doing since the last meeting that I attended is, I met with Brian Sauner of the Placerville Union School Board, and we discussed a couple of things, like the power outages that affected all of our schools, and kind of what we can expect going forward this next year, and also that school district's struggle with homelessness. There's about 130 homeless kids just in the Placerville Union School District. So it was, it was very important information, and plan on following up with that. And then I attended the District Three Supervisors Forum the other night, and wanted to thank the candidates for participating in that. I got my ballot for that election, so it's coming up very soon. And I met with Woodrow Deloria with the El Dorado Transportation Commission, and kind of got an orientation on my new appointment.
All right. Well, I'll go quick. I had, had the opportunity to travel with SAG-HOG delegation down to San Diego. It was a great trip. Sandag, which is our component, our counterpart in San Diego, hosted us, and we're very gracious hosts. We toured their light rail system, some of their HOV lanes and their highways. I mean, they really are doing quite a bit of things on their transportation area. I mean, it's, there's a huge cost associated with what they want to do, you know, 20, 30 years out, but they're really on the forefront of some of the things to help mitigate traffic as well as getting some cars off the road. But it's a long process. I think there was a lot of great ideas for the greater Sacramento region, for Placerville itself, and I think Patty, you've talked to this before, the ability to switch lanes so that potentially through Placerville, you would have three lanes going one direction and one going the other during high-volume times. They're called like zipper lanes, and there's actually a machine that moves the cones or the, the lanes over every, about four feet. Yep. And it's pretty phenomenal.
It's really slick.
Yes. I do. I already told, I want to drive. I want to be the first one to move the barriers over as we, we get more cars moving through. But it was, it was a really educational trip. I thought it was great for this region. It shows that there's a lot of possibilities here for us as a region to improve our transit system, so just wanted to make a quick comment on that. All right, so moving on to item four, our closed session report. City manager, or city attorney, Chris Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, the council did not take reportable action in closed session.
Great. Thank you. Item five, adoption of agenda.
Move for adoption.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Oops.
What?
Agenda. I would like to move something on the agenda.
Yes.
Oops.
That went so quick, I missed it. I would like to move 12.6 to 12.1.
All right, so item 12.6, which I think...
Because we have quite a few people here, and it's going to be a ways to get to 12.6, and so...
I will go ahead and make a new motion to adopt the agenda with the change to here, item 12.6, at the beginning of discussion and action items.
All right. Yeah, we have a second ready?
Oh, I, I, a second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Nice catch.
Okay, moving on to ceremony... Okay, moving on to ceremonial items. Regina, am I still...
No, it's her.
Okay, so we're going to, we're going to move on from the proclamation for Kembelix. I think Gail couldn't be here tonight, but we have her proclamation that we will all sign for her and for Kembelix. Moving on to item 6.2, recognition of contributors to the Festival of Lights. And this is City Manager Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, this year for our Festival of Lights, we had a great celebration of the holiday season, and we had a lot of people that helped us make that a great success. Before, I have a couple of people I want to introduce, but first, I want to talk about Rebecca Neves, our city engineer, who really got it started, I believe, working with some of our local people that helped us get it together and put the whole program together. So, thank you, Rebecca, for all that you did. So, we have some certificates to give out, but I think maybe before we do that, I know that Reverend Al Soto is here, and he had some things that he wanted to say. Would you like to do that now, Al? Is that okay?
Good evening, Al.
This is quite an honor, and I want you to know, one of the evidence of that is I'm wearing a suit and tie. This is the lead team that I had an opportunity to serve with, that made this possible. And if I could just take a quick moment, Yolanda handled all of our vendors and so many things I can't even keep track of. Alicia did marketing for us, and, which was amazing. And then, Kristy, she just did an amazing job helping with production. And I did script this, so I won't be long, but I want to be pointed that we had a great team that served with this. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and all of you on the city council that serve our city, and it is a great city. The city that has an incredible history, Placerville. On behalf of our churches, I would like to say that it is an honor to serve. We have no other agenda but to serve. We love our merchants, and we love our community. I also want to state that it was a privilege to work with and partner with our Placerville Police Department. Chief Ortega is a man who deeply cares, and his team of Commander Joseph Renn and Kim Nida were incredible in all the coordination that they afforded us. Last year's Festival of Lights was just the beginning. From the time that we were involved, it was five weeks to the event, and it was amazing. We are looking forward to an on-ramp of 11 months, and we think the sky is the limit in terms of how our Christmas season can be marked by all the message of Christmas is about. It is about how ultimate hope was birthed in the midst of struggle. It is about a message of peace with so many facing the lack of peace. And I want the city of council to know that the churches in our community love one another and are committed to loving our community. Sorry. This stuff is from the heart. One of our merchants, I just want to acknowledge tonight, that was really helpful to us. The owners of Ambiance are here. Paul and Linda Samples, that allowed us to stage a lot of their equipment and gave us countless hours of their own facility at their own expense to help us, and I want to acknowledge that as well. It is with this that I would like to take a moment and recognize a person who has time and time again embodied a sacrificial love for our community, and I'm proud to call him my friend. Matter of fact, what I want to do is about, what I want to say about this person transcends politics. It transcends just saying some nice quips about a person as if they are a punchline to a dry speech. Ralph Waldo Emerson once declared, "To be yourself in a world that is constantly trying to make you something else is the greatest accomplishment." This man has done that, and he has authentically been himself, and when we needed help in the Festival of Lights, he was there, and that is Dennis Thomas. We all know that Dennis married way above his pay grade, with Wendy, and she's an incredible person. But, I want to acknowledge that Dennis, for me and for our team, has become an incredible person who has helped us sacrificially. At the end of Festival of Lights, at 12 o'clock midnight, this man picked up trash with me and never complained. He's been honorable in how he has navigated difficult situations, and to be honest with you, at times, these difficult situations have been with personalities and people that struggled with the new paradigm. While people are a mess, and we are all challenged by this, because we are all broken people that are messes, and there are people like Dennis who treat people with dignity and respect, and who consistently respect people and speak favorably about them, even when they're not in the room. People who somehow espouse themselves to be brilliant, or smart, or engage others with a chip on their shoulder normally do so, and don't have long-term impact and influence. And my 38 years, almost 40 years of ministry, has proven that. I wish to say thank you to Dennis Thomas for helping us and serving our city really well. He has been a man of character, and we are blessed as a community to have him continuing to serve our city. Finally, loyalty is a lost art for him, and I want to close with this. I love the pastors on our team and our churches, and we stand together. Our love for our chief and our police department, our love for all of you, and our love for every member of our community, even those who don't have homes. What a foreign word to use in a city council chamber like love. One of my favorite authors, Bob Goff, writes this. "Love is never stationary." What this means to me is it moves you towards something bigger than yourself. I do believe there's a God in heaven that is moving our community towards something bigger than all of us. So, my commitment to all of you, as I stand with my colleagues and my friends, is let's love. Let's partner together, and let's create a great future for our community that's bigger than all of us. Thank you for letting us serve.
Thank you, Al. Now, at this time, Mayor, if I could, I'd like to ask you, maybe, to come out to the front here. I'll announce the, we have some presentations for each of those that helped us, and I'll announce if they can come up. You can get that done. Rebecca, will you be my photographer? Thank you. There's quite a list here, so we'll go through as we can. So, first is Sean Stover. See, he's not here. Okay. This one was a hard one, but Dennis Thomas. Besides Dennis, we also have one for Robinson's Pharmacy first. Appreciate it. Clarici Consulting. John Clarici. Thank you. CNH Motorparts. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to give you that. REY Engineering, sorry. So, CNH Motorparts and Mountain Enterprises. Is there anybody there from... This might be part of them, too, I think. Scott Reagan. Scott Reagan. That's Scott. I thought it was. Sorry, Scott. There you go. One more. Airtex. Western Sign. Can anybody hear from Western Sign?
Western Sign.
Okay. We'll make sure we get that to him. Matt Verkamp. While you're here, Matt, we've got one for your company, too. Doug Verkamp, General Engineering. So, don't leave. John Clement. Did I already do that one?
Yeah.
He's not here. Okay. Placerville Downtown Association, Ryan Chase. And these next ones are going to be for our churches that all help. First Lutheran Church. Someone here from... Okay, yeah. Sierra Faith Community. Vantage Point Church. Green Valley Church. Got a whole crew. Great. Terrific. Good job, guys. And last one, I think, Bayside Church. Al. Thank you very much. I want to really emphasize what a great program it was, and all of those, you can see by the number of people that were brought together to make this happen, and all of them were a great contribution to the program to get it done. And I was talking to Al Soto before the meeting, and he says it's going to be bigger and better next year. So, stay tuned for next year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments from council members?
I, I, would you like to?
Certainly. Having a number of years on this council, I have to say that this is the largest presentation of appreciations that I have ever seen. And it just goes to show that this was also the best Christmas decoration season I have seen in decades. So, it, for those that doubt, and those that are concerned about what we're doing and how we're guiding the city, this is a tremendous cross-section of support from a variety of community members that made the 2019 celebration what it was, and it certainly did deserve this level of recognition this evening. And as Al Soto said, just the beginning. And I look forward to an even more exciting and beautiful display for all of the community to enjoy, and all of the travelers on Highway 50. And to all of those, for all their hard work, we greatly appreciate it. This is not a small undertaking. There was many tens of thousands of dollars in plus time and energy that went in to the 2019 display. So, please be patient. The city engineer, as I understand it, runs a tight crew out there. A number of people told me that, and I am confident that what this city and what this group of community members will present in this coming Christmas season, I'm sure will be spectacular. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Al, for that nice, those nice comments. I can't tell you how impressed I am and how proud I am to be a part of this group of people that have just stepped up. They didn't, they had no idea they were going to get a recognition when they started this. We, they did it. They did most of the work. I didn't. But, I helped a lot. And I don't want to get that much recognition, because I'll tell you what, there's a lot of people, and I'm looking out in the audience, and I know every one of them that I saw either setting up sound, setting up tents, serving food, on ladders in the middle of the night, putting speakers up, hanging lights, going through this, I could go through a list of, I'm looking at all these faces of these people that made this happen. And while PDA spent many years doing Christmas, and I think they did a fairly good job, and it was mostly one or two people, one of them being Heidi, working really hard at it, and the other one is Lisa Crummett, prior to Heidi. And they just, they did a fabulous job, and they worked within the scope of what they had. And when it came time for our community to step up and really look at, you know, adding to it and taking over the Christmas, when PDA changed their model a bit, these people stepped up, and they didn't, they didn't, I mean, it was amazing. Sitting in these meetings, they ran it like a church service. And they had a list of everything they needed to do. Everybody knew how to do it. Everybody got assigned something to do, and boom, it was gone, and everybody did it. It was amazing. And then, and that was just, that was all the events that happened, and then the lights that went on in the street. And those people, I tell you what, there's a lot of people that gave a lot of money and time and hours to this, to this, and I look forward to doing it again next year. I don't want to go on, because this has been a while, but with the deepest of my heart, thank you guys for making our city an amazing place to be, especially for Christmas. So, thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you again. We've talked about this, and we've done a lot of, but I also want to give a big plaque to our city. And I want to thank our, all our staff, and our city manager, and everybody that was involved, our police department, and everybody that also added to this and the success of it. So, thank you.
I'll just, Kara?
I don't think I have anything to add. That hasn't already been said by my colleagues, but other than just, you know, a big thank you, and I look forward to seeing the display next year, and it's really great to see all the different groups come together to, you know, for this joint effort that is so important to our community.
There's something about Christmas that just brings out the best in all of us.
Absolutely, and I think that's just the quick comment I want to make as well, is, you know, with all these certificates, with everyone that showed up tonight, everyone that helped, it does give you that sense of community that you don't always see in other places, whether it's in California or anywhere else. And so, we have something really special here in Placerville, and I remember standing up on the steps of the court, and everybody singing Silent Night, not just the people up on the steps, but everybody that was out in the street as well. And I'm trying to think, you know, what a hallmark moment it was. And it was really special. It was very touching, because you just don't see that in other places. So, again, I want to thank everybody that helped, my colleagues as well. So, bigger and better next year as well. I'm looking forward to rolling up my sleeves as well and helping where I can. So, thank you, everybody. Okay, moving on to item seven, public comment. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda, but that is within the subject matter of city council. And we will start on item 7.1, written communications. City Manager, do we have any written communications?
No written communications, other than what you've been provided. There are some things related to item 12.1 on your agenda that we've provided to you tonight.
Great. Thank you, Cleve. All right, and then, item 7.2, oral communications. Does anyone wish to address the city council on an item not on the agenda? If you can state your name for the record.
I have some exhibits for you that might be helpful. I thought it was very fitting tonight that you pay homage to the Kembelix who've done so much... so much for the community. The Kembeliks, the Blairs, the Harrises, the hundreds of other families who were here in the earliest days helped illustrate the core values of this town: honesty, hard work, and helping your neighbor. Alan, for years, was known for rushing down Main Street with the call of the fire alarm on the volunteer fire department for a long time. Bob was on the board of directors for Marshall Hospital, as well as for the school board. So that kind of giving back was what they were known for. I think that that's important to acknowledge, that kind of history. And I told the fellow who just got the building that was condemned on Cedar Ravine the same kind of history, he said, "So what? It's not Mark Twain." I wanted to pass out some exhibits for you. The first one is at the top, a photograph of what's described as the Kembelik House. The one at the bottom is described as the Blair House. If the Kembelik House looks at all like 3095 Cedar Ravine, it's probably because it is. The second exhibit is, in essence, a forgery, is what it amounts to. It's the statement that was submitted in an application to get this demolition permit for this bit of history. And in it, it declares... It's purportedly from the Eldorado County Historical Museum, but it's not. They never knew anything about it when it was... Until long afterwards. It was done by the applicant who sought to get the demolition permit. And the person who talked with the owner said that he was there for only about 10 minutes. You cannot do serious historic research in 10 minutes. You cannot put out a staff report that's 67 pages long on a Monday, or in this case, a Friday, and give the public two days to work with it, two business days. So I hope you'll rearrange your priorities when it comes to paying homage to the history of this town. And one would be to have the planning commission operate a little differently. If you make an objection to a decision and you file an appeal, you have to swear in pain of perjury that the statements you made are true. The person who files the application, eh, not so. So that's a little bit screwy. There are a number of errors that are scary. So what you've done, in essence, by this fast-track approval of a demolition permit, is you've told every speculator in town that what you can do is come in and you'll get a demolition permit real quickly, and the city is ready to push you to get two duplexes, which is increasing your profits by four times. What you didn't know, the planning commission didn't know, is there was another contributor to this bidding process. Gail Rossi and his wife, Gail works at Marshall Hospital, they wanted to restore this building. So while one person who wanted a demolition permit said it could not be saved, just to let you know, it could be because the second person gave down a complete list, step by step by step, how much it would cost. So I hope you put those kind words into action. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk.
Oops. My name is Claire Van Damme, and I'm here representing the Western Slope Coalition on Affordable Housing and Homelessness. And I would... By way of my background, just to let you know, I worked for over 20 years in the county council's office, representing the county, departments of... Much of that time representing the departments of Health and Human Services and Human Assistance. So I have some familiarity with the issues. And I'm also a volunteer at the Nomadic Shelters, at least on a weekly basis, if not more often. And I've had an opportunity to speak with some of the homeless folks about this camping ordinance, which is currently scheduled to be implemented on February 14th. And the biggest thing that I noticed was that there's total confusion, lack of information, and they're ultimately threatened with misdemeanors if they don't comply, but they don't know how to comply, and often don't have the ability to comply. Specifically, they don't know where they can camp. At an earlier council meeting that I didn't attend, it's my understanding that there were three sites that were identified as locations where they could legally camp on the days that they are allowed to camp and for the hours they're allowed to camp. And at this point, those haven't been designated, so they don't know, even when they want to comply, where to go. And they can't just do it immediately. They have all of their possessions and belongings in their tents, which brings me to another of their concerns, which is if they have to take their tents down and remove all of their things, and that's another thing, is that the ordinance doesn't seem to be real clear, do they simply have to lower their tents? Or do they have to remove all of their possessions, including their tents, each and every day during the daylight hours up until... For the hours in the ordinance? And that, when I read it, I don't understand it. I think it's subject to interpretation. But if they have to move all of those things, can you imagine, those of you who've gone camping, if you had to break camp every day and take all your things with you? And these are their possessions. But the bigger... One of the bigger problems... So let me add to that, that a number of these folks have disabilities, physical disabilities, and they're on disability and are older. They cannot physically move their things around if that's what's being expected of them. So they're going to end up in violation of something they can't comply with, even if they want to. And there may be ways... And again, I'm not sure that that's what's expected of them, but if it is, there may be ways that, you know, we could help and others could help to try to make that a little more humane and something they could comply with. Oh, I'm almost out of time, and I'm on the first page. Okay. I would ask that there be some information handed out, like a map. I would ask that they be given porta-potties at these locations so that we don't have the problem that affects everybody of their not having places where they can go to the bathroom, that there be trash cans. Yes. And anyway, I would offer that if there's anything that we can do to work with you on this, that we would be delighted to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, Jonathan Gainesborough. Want to talk about pets and people. Penal Code 3, 587. Tips to keep pets safe this winter. With the arrival of winter, EDC Animal Services reminding residents to take precautions with their pets. Winter in our county regularly brings freezing temperatures, frigid wind, ice, and snow, said Henry Brzezinski, chief of EDC Animal Services. These conditions adversely affect animals in numerous ways, even threaten... Even threaten these conditions, even threaten a pet's life. A few simple steps can ensure your pet's safety, according to Brzezinski. California law, CA Penal Code 597. Penal Code 597 requires that pet owners provide both shelter and protection from the weather for their pets. This is a law to provide protection for animals, for their pets. Shelter and monitoring pets. Keep pets inside whenever possible to protect them from the elements. Don't leave pets outdoors. Pets. We're not talking about people, pets here. Don't leave pets outdoors when temperatures drop. If a cat or dog is outdoors much of the day for any reason, protect them with a dry, draft-free shelter. Routinely check the pet's water dish to make sure the water and the pet's tongue doesn't stick and freeze to the metal. If possible, get them in a three-sided shelter or a barn. Wind chill can threaten a pet's life. 27 degrees last week. 612 Eldorado County homeless. We just learned that there were 130 homeless children in the Eldorado County Union School System. 130 homeless children! 130 homeless children! I am proud of Eldorado County, and I'm proud of Placerville, but I'm not proud that Jimmy Chalmers died a week ago Tuesday morning after being in the Nomadic Shelter. But for the last three months, every Tuesday and Wednesday night, he was out under the mosquito bridge overpass. We've got to get a shelter for the homeless. Penal Code 597 is for our pets. How much more, with my time running out, three seconds left, how much more valuable is every homeless person out there tonight? Let's do the noble thing and get a shelter over them at least Tuesday and Wednesday nights. And let's do it this week. If we have to, let's use Town Hall when it's not being used. And treat them better than you treat your pets.
It's going to take me a little longer to come up to you folks than it should.
That's okay.
I apologize.
Hi, I'm Jane McGinnis. It's good to see you again. I wanted to share something with you, and again, on the subject of the homeless, which is where I'm always going to be sitting here. I'm a member of Green Valley Community Church, and my job there as one of their member volunteers is I'm the program director for grief share, also for divorce care, but I want to talk about grief share. I spend afternoons and evenings...
Could you move the mic just a little bit closer to yourself?
Like this?
Yes, we can hear you better. Thank you.
I spend afternoons and evenings quite often talking to family members who have lost someone to death. I lost my wife. I lost my husband. I lost my special needs child. My grandparents were just killed in a car accident, and they were the people I was living with after my mother was killed eight years ago. It's hard. It is very hard to have this as a heart ministry. The problem is, when you have the person that you have lost, you lost them because they were homeless. I had a woman, and I'll do my best to keep track of the clock. I had a woman who came to grief share originally because her husband died. Her son was very close to her husband. And it was about two years later that her son committed suicide because he missed his father so much, and she was back at grief share. And she would talk to me quite often about the fact that she was terrified because her daughter was homeless in Colorado, and they had nothing that they could offer her there. And then last year, her daughter was trying to cross the street and was hit by a car and killed. And she had to go to Colorado and recover her daughter's body and bring her home and bury her. And she has been in grief share now for quite a few years because she keeps losing people. I am seeing more and more people who come to me saying, "My son is homeless. My daughter's homeless. I'm terrified for them. I can't find them. I don't know where they are, and there's no one who can take care of them." These are our sons and daughters out on the street. And today, one of the other things I have to do as part of grief share is to meet with the grieving families when they plan their memorials so I can explain grief support to them and encourage them to come and get help. And I walked into the meeting today, and there was a young lady whose father had died on the streets. He was homeless, and he felt he was not fit for human society. He wouldn't come home and accept help. He was too shamed. And he died on the streets, and she was in need of a hug. Have you ever picked up a bird or a rabbit, and they're so terrified, they're just shaking? And this girl stood there in my arms and shook. And she could not help her father because he could not help himself. So she's not only got that grief, she's carrying the guilt. You can see it in her face, the guilt of not having been able to help her father. You're going to find me probably coming and speaking to you quite often, but it is not meant as any kind of a criticism. I want you to know that whenever I find information that I think you will find helpful, I'm going to be here to provide it to you. There is, as you've seen from Dr. Joy, there is federal and state money available for some wonderful programs. You just have to follow their protocol. We need to look more into housing first as the protocol because that opens the door to the state and federal money, lots of it, that could be available to the city of Placerville to build a homeless shelter. If people are worried about...
Will you wrap up your comments, please?
I will. If people are worried about the homeless on the street, then let's build a shelter and get them off the street where they can get help with things like opiate addiction. And mainly, I just wanted to say, that's what all of us are here for. We're supposed to be the hands and feet of Christ for one another, and that's how God provides, is through you and me. So God bless you, and I wish you help with this fight. It is a difficult one, I know. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Juan Francisco. Juan is John, chosen of God. Francisco, Frank, free man. And so the Lord, you know, is calling us to be free in Him, not because we get anything for free, you know, but because He cost Him His life. And the Lord Jesus Christ, I had an encounter with Him January the 6th at 5:00 in the evening, 1978. I was doing a roof inspection in San Jose and Sacramento, and pastor on call, and sheriff volunteer, you know? And I appreciate the first responders and everyone here, you know? And they called me in for mediation, you know, because they were having a conflict to businessmen. Many of you are businessmen, you know, and women. So anyway, this man, I had done a lot of roof work for them, and they were having a conflict as to how to resolve the repair of this roof in this building. And so the mediator, you know, they had me go up and share about the condition of the roof and the whole thing. And as I was leaving, the mediator said, "Mr. Vargas, is there anything you want to say?" After I had completed my talk with him, you know? I said, "Yes, sir. These two men are very, very good stewards of their properties because I've done a lot of work for them. And I see all of you here right now, and citizens, you know? And you are all good stewards. You're trying to be even better stewards, and I really appreciate you." And I've been a volunteer for 42 years, and all of us have that volunteering us. One of the sisters mentioned, "Christmas has a way of just making special, the way people help each other, connect each other," you know? And so this is it. And someone mentioned love, you know? And it's true, that's what love does. It helps each other. It helps you. Even if people don't believe in God, if they look at the Christian community, or, you know, people that believe in God, they'll see that common sense says they're doing better than I am, you know, that doesn't believe in God. So we're dysfunctional in many areas, you know? Including myself, and I'm still growing, you know, after 42 years with the Lord. And but I'm... I thank Him because I'm, you know, like a car. If you don't maintain it, it'll, you know, break and die. So same thing with us. If we don't maintain our properties, you might say, the city, our lives, our families, our relationships, our spirit, soul, and body, if we don't maintain it, we're going to be dysfunctional. And that dysfunction is going to affect every one of us at one time or another. But I can see the beautiful heart that all of you have, just from listening to you. So just like I told the arbiter, you know, the mediator, I said, "I know these two men are very good stewards of their properties, and I hope that they can resolve this together." I hope we can resolve this together, whatever's happening.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Frechi Zomni. I do a little newspaper that's for the homeless. I am one of the homeless. In fact, I had a man that was going to be here today. Funny thing is, I came to... Funny thing is, I came to not call him in, call in sick for him, but he can't really call in dead. We actually convinced Jimmy to come here, too. A lot more of us will be here, okay? You know, it's a shame, because Jimmy Chalmers left Shelter, thank you for one day a week or whatever, and he died behind a save mark because he didn't have a home to go to. Well, that's because the day before, he was asked to vacate the mountain of Broadway. Okay? We've been in contact with attorneys, and it's probably going to be an expensive one, but he would have gone home and at least been around his friends. Instead, he died alone behind a save mark. Thanks.
Good evening, Jennifer.
Hi, I'm Jennifer from Clay Street here in Placerville, and I just, for anybody that doesn't know, on a week from tomorrow night on Wednesday at the Recreation and Parks Commission meeting, we're going to have a presentation about concepts for a California Gold Rush National Historical Park, which I think was a great idea to start that conversation with the Rec. and Parks Commission, because there's a lot of interest in the parks and trails that we have around here, and there's a lot of amazing possibilities of connecting them with other sites and realizing the bigger story that they all together are part of. So I have some little announcements here, I'm going to just leave these on the table for anybody that's interested. This is just basically the concept that, you know, so many of our conflicts, well, we have a lot of conflicts that come up. Kirk talked about the historic district where we have a house, or we had a demolition permit, and of course, we have, you know, other examples of demolition that have happened. We have the Herrick Building that, you know, actually folks, the Taylors, took over and actually restored. We have all kinds of resources that are slated for being either altered to the point where their historic integrity is lost, or in some cases, destroyed buildings, you know, bridges, monuments, you know, remnants of a historic ditch system that, you know, is this amazing part of our story of natural resources with water and water rights, and how we changed water systems to make this gold mining thing happen. And there's just amazing stories here. One of the big questions that I won't answer tonight, but I know people will say is, "Well, we already have a Gold Rush Park at Coloma, why do we need a national park to tell the story of the California Gold Rush?" And it's just because it's a bigger story, that's not just a few years, it's all the change, it's the effects on natural resources, the social effects, it's a very dynamic thing. It's the transition from a territory right after we had the Mexican War resolved. We had a long period before we became a state, there was a civil war, and there's a lot of connections. But I just want to say, we often think that we've got, again, competing interests between preserving our historic resources or growth and development. And just down the road, you know, Golden Gate National Recreation Area is really just down the road, and they are a series of sites that aren't connected, there's a lot of incredible partnerships, there's a lot of nonprofit organizations that work together, private businesses, all kinds of things going on with that. It generated a billion dollars in 2018 for the communities around those sites. And I just, I'm hoping that folks will just join me in imagining possibilities. There's a lot of folks that have been part of different parts of these ideas, and I just think, hopefully, that we can look at something that might also just be inspiring to help people, you know, get out of some of the depression and some of the mindsets and some of the things that lead to some of the other problems that we have that we've been talking about tonight. So I'm going to just be leaving this here, and I just also want to say, what Kirk talked about with that house and the demolition, that...
Jennifer, could you wrap it up, please?
That house is now up for sale, so we don't know what will happen to it.
Jennifer, could you wrap it up, please?
And I am finishing that the, there will be a hearing about that whole topic on the 20th.
We have any inner speakers on a non-agendized item? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Do I have any items that wish, any council member wishes to pull an item?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Open it up for public comment. Anyone wish to make a comment on any item on the consent calendar? Evening, Sue.
Good evening. Good evening. I think it's still off, is it on?
Nope, it's on.
Okay. Sue Rodman, resident of Placerville, and I would like to comment on item 8.4, to remove that crosswalk at the intersection of Mosquito Road and the US 90, or US 50, on and off ramps. And I am so glad to see that happen. I think that is one of the most dangerous crosswalks we have in the city, so caduce. It's good to get rid of that one and get it so people will go on a safer path.
Thank you. Any other comments on consent? No? Okay, we have a first and a second. Can we have a roll call?
Mayor Sargosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Akuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We don't have any items pulled, no ordinance tonight or public hearings, so we will move on to item 12, which are discussion and action items, and we're going to move to item 12.6 as we move that up to the front. Approval of a finite list of special events that warrant Main Street closure and update fees, requirements and approvals to ensure a special event meets safety standards and cover costs incurred by the city. And this report, it will be by Mr. Morris. Ah, or Terry?
Yes, thank you, council and mayor. Tonight, we're, this staff report is bringing you two items for consideration in one report, and one is the approval of a finite list of special events that warrant Main Street closure, and the second one is to look at updating our fees and requirements and approvals to ensure that our special events meet safety standards and cover the costs incurred by the city. So just to give you a little bit of background, currently, when a special event is requested, an application packet is filled out by a person that wants to be the representative of that event, and it first comes to me as the community services director, and then is forwarded on to the police department for a safety review. So street closure requests are approved on a case-by-case basis, and that is something that the police department looks at also, and it's through the application process, but the problem with the process that we've found over the years is that there isn't a policy to cap the number of Main Street closures in any given year. It just depends on the events that come up and the approvals, and a lot of it usually hinges on the viability of the time and insurance requirements and things like that. So since we have an open-ended process, for example, last year, 2019, we had 12 Main Street closures, and that was an increase from 11 in 2018. And we've heard in this forum, and I've heard also as a representative of the city, that a lot of these street closures negatively impact the downtown businesses due to loss of customer parking and the failure of events to drive patrons into shops along Main Street, especially things that are incompatible with certain events. So what we're looking for is to create a finite list of events that warrant Main Street closure and a more defined policy for those events that focus on safety, benefit to the city, which is an important aspect, and also recouping the costs for city services. So we had a subcommittee chosen by this council to work with myself and the city manager on issues and draft a policy. So we met first in October of last year, and that included council members Borelli and Thomas and Cleve and myself. And we really focused on what really, what were the aspects of the Main Street closures that were going to be weighed when we looked at these different events. And we looked at a list of longstanding annual events and created a set of requirements and fees to help offset the financial aspects to the city and the Main Street businesses. So that was what we discussed in our first meeting, and then we had a subsequent meeting just a couple of weeks ago, January 30th, and we were able to talk to folks from the PDA and discuss which annual events warranted closure of Main Street. And we had representatives, Tim Taylor and Brian Chase, and we reviewed our list of 2019 events with the subcommittee also. And there was a consensus at that point in time, and that consensus includes the seven events that you see listed in the staff report, and those were ones that we felt met consensus for closing Main Street. And that would be Hangtown Days, which this year is on June 6th, and the Static Classic Car Show in August, Winderlust, which is going to be August 29th of this year, Oktoberfest in September on the 19th, the Trick or Treat on Main Street, which is always October 31st, Festival of Lights, which is always Black Friday. This year, it's going to be November 27th, and then the Christmas Parade this year, which is set for December 6th. The community services department has received applications for all of the above events, including a second car show that the Lions Club submitted on that same January date. They all came in between the 1st and the 6th of January. They have a second event that they're requesting on May 17th of this year, and no other special events requesting Main Street closure have been received as of this date, except for the ones that I have read off to you. In 2019, there were 12 events requesting and receiving Main Street closures, like I had said before, and so I provided that list to you in the staff report, and just to go through them really quick, it was Girls Night Out, we had the Amgen Race, Hangtown Car Show in June, and then we had Hangtown Days. There was also Brew Fest, which is not on our list this year, the Hangtown Evening Car Show, the Antique Street Fair in August, then we had Winderlust, Oktoberfest, Trick or Treat, Festival of Lights, and the Christmas Parade. So those are the events that, at this point, we're bringing in front of the council to discuss, and that's the seven events on the first page. In addition to talking about how many events warrant a street closure, our current application fees for special events don't cover the city's costs for Main Street closures, and new fees really need to be established and approved to recoup them. And some of those costs that are not addressed right now include the setup of signs and barriers by staff prior to and then takedown after the event. A lot of times, that's Public Works and PD, and sometimes some community service, community services staff also. There's a cost for manned barriers and/or barricades at either end of the Main Street closure to make sure that we have pedestrian safety in the street during the event. And then there's also the cost to maintain, repair and provide electrical outlets for event use. Those are constantly being vandalized and destroyed. I know that there's a couple that need to be fixed right now, as a matter of fact. And then street sweeping and garbage cleanup after the event. So staff is proposing that a list of costs be approved and included in the application packet for that setup and pickup of signs and barriers, the manned barricades at street closures, the electricity use, and the street sweeping. Trash and debris collection are addressed in the application right now, but staff is proposing that they be clarified, as outlined in the edited application attachment, and that's also in your packet, to ensure adequate garbage cans and dumpsters are available in relation to the expected attendance of the event. A revised application packet with a set of proposed fees for road closures and clarified language for trash and debris is included, as I had said before, and that attachment does have strikeouts and new language insertions for clarity and for recommended changes. The fees that we are suggesting have been calculated based on our best observed costs for an average special event, and at this point, the fees that are in the staff report, I believe, would cover the cost in each category. So those costs that are being put out for consideration are a street closure, setup, takedown of barriers and signage, cost of $250, vehicular barricades, and that would be two vehicles at each closure area maintained through the event, and that is around $750. Electrical use fee, and this would be an optional fee, include the cost of repair, maintenance and usage. And then there's two street sweeping fees. Sometimes the event, folks want to get a pre-event street sweeping fee, or street sweeping done, and that's $100 as optional, and then there's also a post-event street sweeping fee. So staff does realize that proposing these fees would, could add a minimum of $1,000 to any event requesting a Main Street closure, and this may cause certain events to cancel because of cost. Council certainly could consider some different options, such as waiving the new fees for the 2020 applications we've received so far that fall within the finite list, or imposing some costs this year and others on the following year. There's also a memo in your packet from Commander Joe Wren, and he provided that so that he could speak to the importance of barricades and barriers for street closures. And he's also stressing the importance of an overall safety plan needed to ensure that event participants are protected from incidents and attacks that unfortunately are becoming all too common at this point in history. Security considerations in the memo will be referenced and required in the police department's safety reviews of all special events with road closures from this point forward. And finally, it's important that any event that proposes to close Main Street and affect Main Street businesses should show some benefit to the city and these businesses. Therefore, an additional fee could be charged to any organization that is not a community organization that benefits at a minimum the community as a whole, and preferably benefits the Main Street area specifically. Staff has looked at the following options to consider to address this issue, and that could take a form, take the form of a downtown business use fee, and those options could include a percentage of profits suggested in the staff report, maybe a 30%. Option two could be a straight cost per hour for those events, and then another option that could be explored would be an organization agreeing to donate funding to a city-approved Placerville organization, and donated funds should be amounts similar to those listed above. So these options are not currently included in the attachment as a staff report, because we're looking for direction from the council prior to finalizing these additional items. In addition, any approved city fees applicants would continue to be required to pay for the special event insurance policy, and that is already in the packet. So tonight, council's options could include approval of the list of special events, the additions of fees and changes to the application for the 2020 events, and provide direction to staff requiring or regarding the downtown business use fee. Another option is to approve the list of special events, addition of fees and changes to the application, and implement the fees for the 2021 events, giving the current year listed events time to prepare for these additional costs, or we could take other actions. As far as budget impact, there isn't any additional cost anticipated with tonight's action, and the estimated cost of administering the special events was assumed in our adopted fiscal year budget for this year that we are operating under now. So depending on city council's actions tonight, the city may improve its recovery of costs associated with the administration of special events for the remainder of the fiscal year. I can take any questions that the council has on the application packet or the discussion of the fees or the finite list. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry, and you can take a glass of water now after that very thorough staff report, so thank you. I don't know, Cleve, if you wanted to add anything else at this point before we go to council questions?
Maybe just a couple of comments. Again, we are sensitive to that this is coming somewhat late in the year toward, many of these events may have already started to advertise, so we need to be aware of that. We think there is some value still to having downtown events, the reduction from 12 to 6, one of those was Amgen, so I would say 11 to... The reduction from 12 to 6, one of those was Amgen, so I would say 11, down to the seven events that we have here is quite a reduction. But some of the principles that we were concerned about were Sunday events, which we attempted to limit as much as possible. I believe the only one that is still a Sunday event that's recommended is the parade. And that's been a tradition, so we did agree to continue with the parade on Sunday at this point. Not to say that that couldn't change in the future. There are other options that can be considered for that also. So that's the only other thing. The other point to note, there are a couple of these events that we're recommending in terms of fees, and the parade is one of them, that there may not be a revenue source. I'm not sure. I have talked to the current sponsor, which is the Hangtown Ice Cream Saloon, that has mentioned that there's really not a source of funding for that extent of most of the costs. And anybody that comes out of that, I've been told, goes to Toys for Tots. So, they do not...there's no profit that is made by the sponsor of that program. The other to consider is the Hangtown Days. It's my understanding there's not really a revenue source or any funding that comes in for that event. I believe in the past, PDA may have provided some additional funding to help that event go on, but I'm not positive on that. So those are a couple of events that you may consider. I think we need to think about in terms of these fees that we're proposing to charge as there may not be a good revenue source to go with those. So, in our discussions, I thought I'd mention that. You can take that into effect.
Do you want to mention why Sundays?
Yeah, just briefly, Sundays, especially in the fall. But year-round now, Sundays, the amount of traffic coming down from the Tahoe area has gotten to a point where it really impacts our roads. And closing down Main Street on those days even impacts the situation worse and makes it more of a hazard, a safety issue for us. If you think about it, when that gets plugged up for emergency vehicles to try to get around, I know both our police chief and our fire chief who are here tonight could speak well to that, some of the concerns. I've heard Chief Cordero and his staff talk about some of those things that have happened already, and some of the difficult issues in being able to respond to emergencies. So, we want to make sure as well as we can that we are safe in our community and do what we can. And so, for that reason, we feel that having those activities on Sunday is not a good idea.
Thank you, Cleve. Chief Ortega or Chief Cordero, if you have any comments on this one? No? Okay. Thank you. All right. Colleagues, you have questions for staff at this point?
I actually have a question. It's a little bit off-topic from the Main Street closures, but it's in this application for special events. So, I figured if we're going to make changes to this, it's a good opportunity to go over it. Terry, with the trail events, is there a reason that they're so limited? Is there really high demand for those, for the El Dorado Trail?
What part of the application are you talking about?
So, first page at the very bottom? Like bullet point on the very bottom?
Oh, I believe that that is just because we are trying to make sure that we keep that area as open as possible for public use.
Is there a lot of demand for those trail events?
We get quite a few every year. And since those don't require a road closure, but they do require making sure that we're reviewing the event to make sure that there's adequate knowledge by PD that a lot of them do cross, especially the 5Ks, cross Mosquito Road there. And they usually start and stop in those locations. But yeah, as far as I understand it, the existing application, the reason for that restriction is mostly to try to keep the raw amount of them down per year.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. I know we have two council members that were on the committee. Yes, whatever, the committee. I don't know if you have any...if you want to make any comments now, just from the committee's perspective?
I think I'm going to hold any comments and maybe answer some questions later on.
During discussion? Okay. Great. So we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, I would like to add that the city clerk did receive letters of endorsements and other letters. I think there were 19 in total. And they were for various support of keeping events or against events. And I'd just like to let you know, I reviewed all of those, so I wanted the public to know that. And the constitution of those were...there were six letters that were in favor of Oktoberfest and none against. There were nine in favor of Winderlust and one letter against it. And the car show, there was a letter in favor and none against. And then there was a letter that was in favor of any and all events. So, that was our tally.
Thank you, Terry. I know we got these late in the afternoon, so I don't think everyone had a chance to go through them in any substantive way. So we appreciate the recap on those. And we'll now go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Good evening. I'm Mike Archinajchik, Placerville Lions Club. Our Lions Club has served this community for 96 years as Lions. I just wanted to point out, because you did receive the letter I sent late, our car shows that we put on, actually, the car show that I volunteered to put on, was instigated and promoted by the Placerville Downtown Association. We did it with the understanding that we would contribute back to the Placerville Downtown Association 25% of the proceeds of our car shows. The May Car Show represents a significant portion of our revenue, greater than 50%. A lot of our projects, like the Fishing Derby, Kindle Reading Project, the human trafficking awareness projects that we're currently doing, are all funded through our revenue raising. We do not benefit as a club of any of the proceeds we do. We do it all in volunteer. We set up the car shows ourselves. PD does provide their volunteers, which I appreciate for the exit of the car shows. The car shows are generally in place before 9 o'clock. In fact, if you know anything about these guys and these car shows, I set the time to start at 6:00, they start at 5:00. If I went to 5:00, they go to 4:00. They are just that diligent about where they want to sit. The car show fills all the spots from Bedford to Sacramento Street. And we also fill in the courthouse parking lot. This is well-received by the public and our car owners. I purposely have been trying to keep this quiet, just because I didn't want to give repercussions back to the city. So I wish that you would consider putting the May Car Show done. We do that...we don't do it in June normally. We had two rain delays because the weather was so bad this last year. But generally, we do it on May 17th, and it is done in a very orderly fashion, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know who I am, so. I agree with...you know, first, let me say, having Terry come aboard, I've had an opportunity to meet with him. I think it's great that we have somebody in his position that's doing these things. Several things that...especially working with Festival of Lights, and then I was with Girls Night Out, and I've helped with some downtown events. Some considerations first, you're going to probably hear this and say, "Well, he's a pastor, so why wouldn't he like this?" But I think it would be better use of time to have the parade on a Saturday, for a variety of reasons. Number one, we have a lot of people that like to get involved, not just in our church and other churches. It limits their capacity to be able to do so. Secondly, the traffic patterns on a Sunday coming down from Tahoe are pretty...it takes me quite a while just to get from Missouri Flat Road to Carson Road. So, just a little bit of consideration. I'm not going to lose any sleep over it either way, but I think it's something to consider. Secondly, the use of alcohol downtown. I've been...I live on Carson Road. Two things affect the brick wall in front of my house that protects my house that was decorative but is shortening, is drunk drivers going up and down Carson Road. After the last Oktoberfest, actually, the last three years, my brick wall's gotten hit several times. If I could make the recommendation, not a prude, alcohol, wine, I get that most people behave, some people don't, it would be good to have a plan in place where we discuss staging vehicles for shuttles, whether it's the county fairgrounds or some other place. If there is going to be the use of alcohol, and we know that people are drinking, what's our plan to accommodate some of those things? Because I can tell you, going up and down Carson Road, we've lived there for three and a half years now, it's quite an issue during those times. And we can't control Apple Hill traffic that's coming down, and they're doing what they're doing up there. But it's something to consider because of the fact that people are drinking and they're driving, and I have a brick wall that's getting smaller and smaller, just because they keep on hitting it. And then, thirdly, if I could just make this very quick recommendation, again, nothing against the list that's been given. I'm supportive of it, pretty excited to get to work on several things. But I think that it would be helpful if there was an educational process concerning the event planning. As a person that was thrust into this, if I didn't have Dennis navigating this last one, I would have been completely lost, and we hadn't had Terry yet. So it would be great to do...and I know they did this in Lincoln at the previous city I was at. They actually did some workshops that educated the public on how to go through the event. I know I'd take the class, so that I can become a little bit more educated with that, so that I wasn't frustrating some of the people that are involved with that. That could be very, very helpful, and probably reduce a lot of your angst as well. But those are my thoughts. Thank you, Terry, for doing what you're doing.
Hi, my name's Lexi Boger, and I'm the president of the El Dorado Winery Association, here to talk about Winderlust. And I second a lot of those suggestions, too. They sound really good. There's a lot about Winderlust, so I'm just going to hit on the sort of safety concerns or some of the less happy things. I have compadres who'll do the feel-good stuff after this, but in the interest of time, I think I'll stick to the nuts and bolts. I don't know if everyone knows that where we do Winderlust, it's between Cedar Ravine and the courthouse. So I think for traffic especially, that's a convenient location, because we aren't putting any cars out at the lights. We are detouring them up Pacific Street, and then that ends them up on Placerville Drive or that last exit. So even though that August date's not really a bad traffic date, we're still thinking that it's not going to be a huge traffic impact. We also...we have a grocery outlet parking lot for a shuttle, like we were talking about, so people can park in a safe location, not clog the streets. And we have a free shuttle from Thompson's Toyota that runs during the event and afterwards as well. So hopefully, that minimizes the parking concerns and traffic. In terms of safety, Edwah does not participate in what we like to call all-you-can-drink events. We've spearheaded a system, we're the first association in California to do this, where there are no free pouring of alcohol. Every ounce is paid for. So the ticket holders buy a $1 ticket, and they have to turn that in for every ounce of alcohol that they consume. So what that really does is regulates what they're drinking. It makes them respect the wine more, slows them down because they're paying for it, you know, each time they hand that ticket over. So we've seen that really have an effect on the behavior of the people at the events, is that they're just a little more mellow, and they're not having these sort of drunk-fest scenarios because of that situation. We also have a fenced event, which means that only ticket holders are in. And at all those points of entry, we are checking their age, if they're a designated driver, if they're a minor, they're wrist-banded. And then those are all staffed, so there's no in and out of people who are not supposed to be there. So it really is controlled from having people come in who are near Do Wells or whatever they might be getting into. So it's very controlled in terms of that. And then our safety helpers can have a better glimpse of what's going on. I think probably the biggest concern that people probably have with Winderlust is the noise. And this year, we're hoping to go door-to-door to the neighbors and offer them all free tickets. And if they don't want to come to the event, we can at least give them a heads-up, so that they can maybe have a date night on that night and not be there, if it's going to be too loud. And then whatever the noise levels or time constraints the city wants to see on a concert event, we are happy to comply with. So, our times aren't set in stone or anything, so we can adjust for that. Probably the last thing with your fees, we would say, anything that you guys need from us in terms of offsetting costs and helping with setup, we are just more than happy to do that. The percentage of revenue is something we'd have to consider. You know, it depends on what those details look like. But we do charge the city's tax for all of our ticket sales. In fact, anything we sell, since we are now on Main Street, does get that city's tax revenue. As well as, basically, the revenue we get from these events goes to marketing the region to tourism, to bring people back here. And as we are trying to partner with Placerville as the gateway city, we're hoping that you see that the revenue that we generate is actually marketing dollars for all of us to get people to come back here. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kara Sather, and I am the executive director for the El Dorado Winery Association. So I just want to echo a few of Lexi's comments and what she said in terms of safety and what we've tried to do to mitigate any problems with the event. But also want to talk about how we structured our event to really try to benefit the merchants of Placerville, downtown Placerville. So we actually have two legs to the event, and we had a VIP pre-party that took place on the main part of Main Street, where the...you know, by the bell tower. And what that looked like is, these were people who paid an extra amount to have a VIP ticket and the VIP experience. We had wineries that partnered with restaurants inside galleries. So we were helping to promote art. We were promoting our local restaurants, as well as the wineries, to help, you know, increase. And the feedback that we had received that day from all the merchants was highly favorable. It elevated what was the old art and wine event into a new experience, where it wasn't just a drunk fest. Again, it was more regulated. There was specific food and wine pairings that they were all able to enjoy, as well as the local artists' work. So it was really beneficial, and it was great to see the number of people walking around. They all got their little swag bags, walking up and down Main Street, promoting the region. And in those swag bags, we also made an offer to all the merchants on Main Street to be involved. They could either contribute some to the swag bag, or they could have an offer that would go in a little book that all the VIPs get to drive traffic into their store. Nobody actually took us up on that, but the offer was made. So again, it's trying to help increase the camaraderie and the feeling and the spirit of downtown Placerville with all the tourism dollars that were driving into the region. So again, it's trying to just really create a symbiotic relationship between our association and the downtown merchants. And I will tell you, prior to this, I had run Roseville's Downtown Tuesday Nights, which they have, believe it or not, for 13 weeks in a row. They closed down their Main Street on a Tuesday night, and it has a concert. But we had one of the main property owners of downtown Roseville come to this event, and he was blown away by the experience. And he said, "We wish you could replicate this for us, because the spirit that we created, celebrating everything that El Dorado is, was truly unique." We had all of our local artists were from El Dorado, all of the musicians were from El Dorado, and it really...and all the vendors were from El Dorado. It wasn't an outside event. It was all designed to promote our local people, and it was very well-received. And even people from outside the region could feel that spirit in that community. So any of you who are there, I'm sure you could understand what I'm referring to. And I'm out of time, so thank you.
Hi, I'm Angie from Pop Art. I'm a merchant. No disrespect to anyone. I appreciate the Winderlust Festival. I appreciate, you know, everything you're doing. First of all, between November and January, every Saturday is precious to me as a m-... Um, first of all, between November and January, every Saturday is precious to me as a merchant. The parade is a zero day for me, every year. So I would plead with you to please not do the parade on a Saturday. I'd heard somebody say that they were thinking about doing, or something about a Saturday, uh, please don't do that. Okay. The Wine, Art and Wine Festival used to be a, uh, event that benefited the merchants. I would have 500 people in my store, and my store's kinda weird, so maybe people wouldn't walk in normally, and they have the opportunity to come in and go, "Oh, my gosh, you're a frame shop," or, or, "Wow, look at all this great art." Um, and people would come back for years, I've been on Main Street 10 years. Um, so we don't have that anymore. The Winderlust Festival, I attended it, I loved it, but it wasn't benefiting me. Um, I understand that there was the opportunity to be a VIP, uh, representative for that, but it was at 1 o'clock in the afternoon was the starting, and I have business to do and I wasn't able to stop the normal business flow to, to that early in the afternoon. Uh, the Brew Fest, same thing, people would be in my shop, 500 people would come in my shop. Uh, last year, let's see, this, two years ago, 22 people came in my store, and last year, 12 people came in my store. How do I know? 'Cause I kept track, you know, the, for people that were attending the Brew Fest, it's just... Uh, so we don't have those events anymore. I'm not the only one that feels this way. Um, not every event is going to benefit every merchant, like the car show doesn't do me anything, but Man Cave kicks butt. You know, it's just, you know, not every event's for everybody, and so, you know, yeah, okay, let's do, do the car show, 'cause it's good for some people. Um, you know, or the, uh, the Girls Night Out is a, a great event for some and not for others. It's, it's not about that, it's, it's just, um, well, what is it about? Sorry. I get really nervous talking in public, but it's honestly, it, well, I've heard this more than once, and I'm, apologize in advance, but a lot of the events that they're doing on Main Street now that don't involve the shops or getting people in the shops could easily probably be held at the fairgrounds instead of shutting my street down, and I'm sorry I said that, but I'm right there, boots on the ground at my shop and see what happens on Main Street, and that's how I feel, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, I prepared something here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council, for allowing me the time to talk about Oktoberfest. My name is Russ Reyes from Kilt and Cork. Um, I've been in this county for 22 years, and last year found, uh, myself, um, with the blessing and privilege to run the Oktoberfest, so just talk a little bit about that. Um, the Oktoberfest here in Placerville had a humble beginning 11 years ago, 2010. Um, it was started by a guy sitting behind me back here with his, uh, lederhosen on, um, with just a keg of beer at the wine, uh, winesmith, and through the years, it's grown into this, like, thing that has its own life. Um, they, they realized back then what they had, and I think it's really special, especially being a part of it last year. It's a wonderful celebration of German culture, obviously, and it, it celebrates the food, the music, um, the costuming, um, of course, the beer, that's a big part of it, of course. Um, just kind of, uh, to touch on that real quick, Oktoberfest in Munich starts on September 19th. Um, so we have asked on the application that we're gonna have Oktoberfest on September 19th as well. Uh, that's, does two things, one, it starts Oktoberfest when it's supposed to, you know, in September, and, uh, we believe it's gonna help take the burden of that Apple Hill traffic, which you have in October, you know, out of the, the equation, so it's gonna be in September. Um, so 2019 was my first year as Kilt and Cork, and we were brought in halfway through the process. Uh, Beers and Sack, which is located in Sacramento, had been running it as well as the Beer Festival for the past couple of years, um, and they pulled out for some reason. So, uh, as a, as a quick fix, the PDA asked if we could handle that, and we said, "Sure, we can do that." Um, going into it, we wanted to make sure that we met four objectives that were based on surveys from Main Street, um, shops, as well as, um, the Placerville Downtown Association surveys that they'd had, uh, prior, and those, those four objectives were, one, to keep this a free event for the community, 'cause it is a free event, so we do not charge people to, to attend this event. Um, it's very family-oriented, um, just like the real Oktoberfest. Uh, number two is, we wanted to include the Main Street shopkeepers and drive business to those shops. Um, so we tried to accomplish that with some technology this past year, uh, didn't work out, 'cause we have some challenges in Placerville as far as internet, um, but that was one of them. And then also, we wanted to make it a local event, and in the past, it hadn't been local, so we brought in all local, um, El Dorado breweries, um, vendors and the wine, and we also wanted to be safe, that was the fourth objective. Um, so what we're, what we're looking for this year is more feedback from the merchants. Also, we're gonna be looking at, um, ways that we can, um, use the parking lots to help with that and shuttles. Um, so there's a lot of things that we can do now that we have full control of this event with the PDA as a partner. Um, as far as the cost, I wanted to address that really quick, too. Um, the costs that are, uh, a part of what you're proposing, we're in full support of that. And the reason for that is, we feel that when you have an event, a good event, you have to invest in it. So, um, the, the fees for the barricades, for the, um, street sweeping and cleaning, um, that's, I think that's a great thing that you guys are doing with that. Plus, the 30% use fee, um, or the, the use fee that you're proposing, that's 30%, that's also fair, 'cause that's kinda what we did with the PDA last year, that was what the agreement was, um, and we want that money to go back to them. In fact, they told us part of the fees that they received from the Oktoberfest helped with festival lights, and I think that's kinda cool that it can kinda move forward. So, um, that's really it. Um, I appreciate you allowing me the time to speak to you, and, uh, hopefully we'll be saying "prost" on September 19th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and the City Council. Um, my name is Leanne Davis, and I own, own a business in Placerville, not in the downtown Placerville area, but in the outskirts, and, uh, I own Vera Mano Vineyards, and we participated in Winderlust, it was a great event. We actually did partner with a winery, or a, a restaurant on Main Street in the new El Dorado Winery Association Education Center, and we sold 500 tickets, VIP tickets, and that brought 500 people onto Main Street to go into all the stores, not just the galleries, but they went into the restaurants, they went into the other little stores, the, um, the antique shops, the clothing stores, and it was a great event. And before that, we had a lot of our customers come to us and ask us, "Where do you suggest that we go to dinner that night? Where do you suggest that we stay?" We had so many of our customers participating in this from outside of the region, and I just wanna say, if you're gonna, you know, think about the different events that happen in the area, this is one that we should keep. That was a great event, we brought, brought in a lot of people to the city and a lot of money to our organization. Thank you.
Thank you.
Guten Abend, alles gut? Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Michael Friend, uh, resident and Old Hangtown Beerworks, uh, very quickly, I'm very happy to see that the Oktoberfest is on the list. I think you should keep the Christmas parade free and consider it a gift to the children from the city. I also think you should keep the Hangtown Days as a historical thing free as well. I think it's perfectly appropriate to offset costs to the city. I would eliminate certain line items like, uh, electrical receptacle repair. I mean, I think it's really difficult to track those specifically to an event, I think just, they get vandalized in general anyway. So I, I would just wrap everything up into one fee, and this is what it is if you're gonna have the event, boom, and, and not worry about a line item sort of thing. Um, with regards to the Brew Fest, and it was a challenge to know whether to wear my lederhosen or my, my kilt, lad, I didn't wear my kilt, or my Mr. Brew Fest hat, 'cause I am Mr. Brew Fest. Having done the Brew Fest for 20-plus years, um, it has been a little bit disappointing to see how it's changed, and with regards to the merchants, I think there was far more value for the merchants when we had beer inside the merchants and people went inside. I'd really like to see the Brew Fest reconsidered and brought back and restructured. I think any event that we have on Main Street, if possible, should benefit the merchants, should also benefit the city at large, and it kinda puts us on the map and distinguishes us. But I think the direction is good and happy to see where we are. Auf Wiedersehen.
Thank you, Michael.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, and while other people think that it's just fine to send everything on Pacific Street, Pacific Street is also, gets totally jammed when they do these Main Street events, and that is also one of the main routes for the ambulance to get to the hospital. So while you might not think that Pacific Street is a big deal to do a detour in, I think it is a big deal to detour traffic to Pacific Street. I am glad to see us getting this down to a finite list. When you think about 12 events on Main Street, divide that by four, 12 divided by four is three, for three solid months, Main Street was closed. That's what it means to have 12 events. I think this, the list is still about three too many. The wagon train and Hangtown Days belong to Placerville. The, the kids going trick-or-treat on Main Street belongs to Placerville. The Festival of Lights belongs to Placerville. The Christmas Parade belongs to Placerville. The winter, the Wine Fest, could just as easily be held at the fairgrounds, so could the Brew Fest, so could Oktoberfest, if they want to combine the two, that's fine with me, but the problem with having alcohol on Main Street has already been addressed tonight, I think it is a big problem. We don't have a lot of extra parking, and what we do have when it comes to driving after you've had whatever you've had to drink is, is not a good one. And unless we're going to put our police force doing breathalyzer tests on every single person who leaves the event, I think we need to get the alcohol off of Main Street. I heard nothing tonight from people who would like to keep these events that say they could not happen at the, at the fairgrounds. You could still have your VIP tickets and have those people come to Main Street and then go for the main event to the fairgrounds. There's no reason not to do it that way. The car show could also happen at the fairgrounds. I'm, I really do appreciate that the Lions Club does a lot for our community, but I think they could raise just as much money at the fairgrounds and donate it to exactly the same places that it's going now. So, that is my two cents worth.
Thank you. Oh, no.
Mayor and council member, my name is Ivan Olivo, and, uh, I'm a 10-year Placerville resident and also, uh, part-owner with the Nello Olivo Winery, which we have in this county, and, um, we, uh, participated last year on the Winderlust event, it was our first time, first year participating in that event, and, uh, we were very excited to do that, and, uh, I, uh, we weren't able to do the, I guess, the VIP part, which is also, like, was mentioned before, um, someone, one of the merchants had mentioned that, you know, wasn't allowing the traffic in there, but I believe they sold 500 tickets, which was mentioned, and that was 500, a lot of these people, by the way, are new people, um, that come from El Dorado Hills, Folsom, Sacramento and beyond, um, that are, you know, looking for something to, to do outside of those areas and to come to here. There are a lot of events that are also done at the county fairgrounds, but I think by pulling people into the heart of the city and to bring them onto Main Street to experience what that is and experience the people and the vendors, you don't really have that at the count, you know, at the fairgrounds, so I really think that that's a, a key element to have these events still on Main Street. And as far as a concern with alcohol, well, alcohol exists already on Main Street, all the restaurants, you've got wine tasting on there, so, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't see it as being such a huge issue, especially when we're controlling it by each ticket that we give. Um, it's just so controlled, so it's not like a, you know, drunk fest, or, you know, people just unlimited drinking and so forth, and I think if it were that, I would totally agree, and I would say that that's a concern, um, but we run tasting rooms, we do this every day, um, we're a very good judge of character on people, we don't, you know, offer anything, you know, excessive or in addition, um, we're very, very controlled, and I say, I, I think that those events that we do, um, really do provide that, and, oh, why am I getting so nervous? I don't know, okay. So, um, there was Carol Smith, who owns Empress on Main Street, um, she's sick with the flu, um, so she wanted me to read this, she said, "Please speak on my behalf and tell them that we loved the, uh, Winderlust event. It, uh, made a lot of money for our business, and we met a lot of new customers, um, who have never gone that far down Main Street before." Um, she felt like that, uh, she's been in business for 20 years and felt like that she's been left out of all the Main Street events, so to be on that half of Main Street was a huge benefit to her. Um, there's also a new business right next to her, the, uh, the Hangtown Leathers, which used to be part of the Cosmic Cafe. She also wanted to express as well that, you know, loved this event and being in that location, they were actually right where the band, I believe, was, so they were the ones that had the loudest and most music and, um, but they still had people going in and out of those stores. I think even after the event, people would go and were asked, "Where do I go to eat? Where do I go?" They're right there on Main Street, so a lot of everybody just distributed and went, you know, right there in the Main Street area, so, um, I hope that you guys will consider it, I'm glad to see it was one of the, one of the ones on the list, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. Um, there's been a lot of comments, let's just send it to the fairgrounds, we've looked into that, too, and, um, the, uh, fairgrounds is not the end-all solution, they have a heavy schedule, they're booked. Uh, when we tried to swing a couple of events to another location, we found there were no dates available between the, uh, car races that they have, where they, even though they're not using the rest of the fairgrounds, they won't run out the rest, other part of the fairgrounds on those events. That's gonna take some planning, uh, well in advance to get a date there, they've got, uh, they're pretty successful in filling up their calendars, so I just wanted you to be aware, everybody aware of that, that, uh, yeah, that sounds like a great Plan B, but they, uh, their schedule's pretty full already. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any other comments?
Kirk Smith, I talked to merchants and asked them if you knew about the, uh, price scale that was considered, and, uh, people from the city did talk about this subject in general terms, but didn't come up with a pricing list. To me, it looked like price gouging and really excessive, like $795, something like that, for an auxiliary police car. Uh, I don't care whether that's one or two cars, I mean, have you thought about Hertz or Avis? I mean, uh, it doesn't cost that much, I mean, I'll give you two cars to block both ends of Main Street if you want, uh, for free. The other thing is, I've heard a number of people talk about merchants generally support it, and in each case, uh, I know of no information to back that up, just from my review. My family's owned property on Main Street for 60 years and rented to a number of businesses. If our merchants are happy, we're happy. So what I did a couple of years ago, after, uh, one of the city council members suggested it, is to be much more systematic in the way I sampled views, and so I, I'd go through a cross-section, and the interesting thing about the antique fair is it did exactly what we said that we want for downtown events, is to stimulate downtown business. Uh, the bookery, uh, a lot of the antique stores, uh, described it as a booming day, and the reason is because it's a different kind of audience. They're not coming here for the booze, they're part of a circuit, the merchants, the vendors in those, uh, antique fairs, but it's also, um, you know, coming in from the Bay Area. I found this last time about a dozen people who were speaking German, they're at a club down in the Bay Area, and then there was another group of motorcyclists from the Bay Area, which is exactly what we want. And when you come, you know, a three-hour drive, you're gonna stay at the Carrie House, as a number reportedly did. Um, I was glad to hear about Ms. Smith at the, uh, one shop, a couple of shops at the, um, uh, you know, the Pearson's, because that's good news, they hadn't heard it before. I hadn't heard it before. And I'm sure for that event, it was true. There have been a number of efforts over the years to reach out to people that far. But correct me if I'm wrong, you expressed a concern about safety. And then you're talking about it's somehow an advantage to block off Upper Main Street from Bedford Avenue to Cedar Ravine. Isn't that where the ambulance goes? I mean, isn't that the traffic route they take? But Michael Friend was correct when there was a boom to business or helpful for business when the beer was in various businesses all up and down Main Street. Once they have it out, that's not the kind of crowd who comes back. You know, they're not going to come back into business because they somehow found that those books at the newsstand were wonderful and that, all that stuff. No, they're not the people who come back. It's a different drinking craft. You might try the fairgrounds for one of the events, but as Tim Taylor pointed out, there is a problem about scheduling. I'm all in favor of doing much more systematic evaluation of the events. But please, consider those things when you're hooked into it. The long-term impact on, does it help Main Street business and the merchants on Main Street? That should be your criteria, instead of looking at some kind of cost-benefit analysis. Because the big brew fest was popular among PDA people because it generated a lot of money, but didn't generate money for merchants downtown, especially recurring business. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, I will close the public comment portion and bring it back to Okay. We've heard a lot. Had time to think. Comments? Questions?
I've got a couple of comments. I might have more, too, as the conversation moves on.
All right.
But I did have a chance to read the letters, written communication on this. And I was encouraged that all of the letters of support for the events were the events that were already the ones recommended by the commission, which shows that we're on the right track for the community and what the community wants. I think that, I think the list is good for, actually, sorry, for this coming year. Well, okay, so I think Hangtown Days is great. I think the Lions Club does really important work in the community. And having a car show is important. I think we should have an edouard winery event. It's just a really important organization for the region. I think we should have a local beer event. I think that's great. Trick or treat, definitely. Festival of Lights, for sure. And same with the Christmas Parade. Looking at this list for 2020, I see a car show and Winderlust like two days apart, which I don't think is great for merchants downtown. I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that this year. I think that we should keep the Christmas Parade on Sunday. I agree that changing it to Saturday would be really hard on merchants during the holiday season. I think that we should have a clause in the application or the policy that the city may waive fees for events that serve, you know, the public good of the residents, like the Christmas Parade or Hangtown Days, where they're not revenue-generating events. And then just kind of an overall comment is there's a lot of great events on this list. From a restaurant perspective, Girls' Night Out has always been a really good, successful event downtown. But I don't think they all require street closures. So, you know, just because it's not on the list for this coming year, I don't think means that we're saying we don't want these events downtown. We still want events downtown. Art walks are great. They just don't all require street closures, which is our main concern. So that's my comments for now.
Thank you, Kara.
Mayor, could I jump in just real quick?
Yes.
I want to mention, we didn't mention that, but we did talk about that specifically. Girls' Night Out was when we talked about that we could support but didn't feel required a street closure. We'd also talked about on the committee, the possibility of closing just the triangle area around the bell tower for certain events if they needed an area, you know, to assemble or to pass out things. So those options are there also.
Thanks, Cleve. Patty?
Well, I just, I want to make it clear that the reason we're doing this, what really started all this in my mind is Highway 50. And all the controversy that we've had, we've all shared and we know. So we did talk about the Main Street events causing extra confusion during those times. So that's what really started this whole thing. Then we got into, it was really interesting finding out how, and I think I was one that questioned about these events and how, how much the city contributes to it. We're constantly hearing and we're saying all the time, "We can't afford it. We don't have the money, dah, 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 dah." And yet, we've been losing a lot of money on these events. And not that it was not, it wasn't something that was like thrown away or anything like that. But again, and I think we saw on the police report and everything, these events have to be policed. And all this is beginning, the world we live in, more and more crucial. And somebody has to pay for it. And do we keep doing this, you know, with our, with all the other things that we have to meet the costs on? And also, the gentleman from the car show, we understand, all of you are raising money for a good cause, and we're not trying to take that away. But we just, we have to find some semblance of controlling all these things. And I, and I think to eliminate the number that we have eliminated is going to help a lot. And I agree with what Cleve just said, is we can have a lot of sidewalk events without closing down the street. We don't need so many Sunday events. And I think, again, that was one of the reasons that we talked about closing the car show and just allowing it one time, is because it was a Sunday. And it was, you know, another one of those tying up Highway 50. And so that's really where we were coming from. And we're not trying to dispute that any of your organizations are not wonderful. I mean, they all are. We appreciate all the support and everything that you do and all the fundraisers and everything. But I think it was Mr. Soto said, "We need to discuss this and we need to find, we need to sit down and have a roundtable and talk about why we're doing all these things that we're doing. And let's see if we can't find another way, work out something different." And I do understand about the fairgrounds, they are jammed. And we can't have everything there. But there's other places besides the fairgrounds that possibly we could, you know, help some of these things work out. Anyway, we worked real hard on this and considered everything that a lot of you have talked about tonight. And I think that, all of us, and we can get together and find some solutions to this. But that's where we're kind of coming from.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could. Thank you. First of all, thank you, everybody that worked on this. And thank you, Mr. Zeller, for an outstanding effort on this. I see it in several phases. These are annual events. You know, we deal with a calendar and then we deal with a fiscal year up here. And organizations deal with the calendar and the holidays and the associated events that they're going to try and promote. This is already fixed in a lot of people's minds that this is what's going to happen in 2020. So I think we have to be, we have to respect the fact that a lot of these organizations are counting on, or raising funds or advertising their groups, whether it's a winery group or the Lions Club, at their usual events this year. I think we probably will, I would hope, we'll find that we're going to need to continue to monitor this. And again, the job that Terry's doing and with the help of the police chief and the fire district, to bring this forward, to realize that, you know, there are 70,000 cars a day that go up and down Highway 50 now. And that wasn't the case 10 years ago or 20 years ago. When Apple Hill doesn't work, this town doesn't work. It wasn't always like that. We've just all kind of gotten used to it day by day as it's been enforced on us. So I really support staff's efforts to bring this cost in line with the reality of what it's cost in the city or getting somewhere close to that. Probably, it shouldn't happen this year because we're, I won't say we're springing this on you, but this is February. A lot of people have already, as we've heard, they've all put their applications in. So in 2021, we will have a clearer application, what that's going to cost. The idea of having an applicant's workshop, I found, something, I think if Terry could sit down with those, the folks from all the various organizations at a well-advertised meeting, I think that would be very beneficial, so that everybody understood what is the city talking about, the costs, expectations, et cetera. One of the concerns I have is the Lions Club. And we're the, a couple of things. 100% of the money that they're raising goes back into the community or into the Lions Association, you know, as a national organization. They're not just supporting the Lions Club, they are supporting a number of community events, 97-year history in this county. And I personally find the car shows to be the least stressful, less impactful, cool kind of event that you can just calmly walk and look at nice car after nice car. And I would not support not allowing them the opportunity to do a spring and fall car show, just for that reason. I think it's a very low-impact event. We're hearing that they raise over 50% of their annual funds from those events, which brings me to a question. They were nice enough to share with us that they had an arrangement or an agreement with the PDA, that PDA got a percentage of their profit. I would say that, given the current status of PDA, why in 2020 would they be sharing their profit with the Downtown Association? Can we say that, we had a mass resignation and an accusatory letter issued, I believe, at our last council meeting over PDA. And here I hear that they're going to take 20% of the Lions Club's profits. And I don't know that that's necessarily relevant to the viability of the Downtown Association, as I recognize it right now. So I'd welcome more discussion on that and more information from staff if we can get it. Any organization that, please don't downplay that having traffic on Pacific Street is a good thing. It is absolutely not. Pacific Street, it took me 30 minutes to go from C&amp;H Motors over to the post office during Winderlust. Once the, once the event filled, it was 10 or 15 minutes. But I shouldn't have to go, shouldn't take, so please. There's a very, all of these events have impact. Pacific Street is not a bonus point situation. That's huge. That whole south end of the town was plugged. For the Christmas tree lighting, it took me 35 minutes to go two blocks on Cedar Ravine. And we did not, as a city, have the warning signs far enough out into the county to avoid rear-end collisions on Cedar Ravine. As the flood of folks was coming in to be here for that tree lighting ceremony, those are things that staff is going to have to think of this November when that event takes place. So the popularity and the population are totally different than what they were 10 years ago, of course, and they continue to grow every year. Another question for, a question for staff is, the reality, at least in 2020, is every organization that has an event in September and October needs to be prepared for a power outage plan. That how are you going to cancel your event and notify your participants if PG&E is not able to have the power on? It's a very real issue that had these events hit a little differently this past year, the whole town would have been out of power. So we don't want to see that happen, but it needs to be in here, at least until we know PG&E has got some sort of a plan that can better address the needs of the foothills. So I guess with that, I would just say, again, thank you very much. I like the list of events. I would be in favor of adding the second Lions Club show. I think that that would be very appropriate. And I think we need to continue to work as a group with all the various organizations and the city staff to continue to refine this in the year going forward so that we can have that positive impact. I think something that wasn't mentioned about the fairgrounds compared to what it would cost you to use Main Street, is the fairgrounds is expensive. They don't give those old buildings away. And you will pay for parking and attendance and gatekeepers and, yeah. So to compare the fairgrounds with not talking about the cost to an organization, I know a number of events that don't take place anymore simply because they raised their fees a number of years ago. So Main Street is a bargain, whatever idea Mr. Zeller comes up with. So let's not forget that reality. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Dennis?
I have been doing this or being involved with street closures probably for the past 20 years and for, in a variety of different capacities. And, you know, at any one time, you can take one of these events and 50% of the people will like it and 50% of the people won't. And I have yet to find one event that was universally accepted and appreciated in, throughout the town or in the downtown. And when you come to, when, over the years, these events have grown and they've taken on, you know, bigger lives, the events have become much bigger than they were when they first started out at the Wine Smith with a keg of beer. Now it's 50 kegs of beer and a full street closure and 30 tents and 2,000 people. So it's come a long way. I'm talking about Brew Fest, not Oktoberfest, but those are the numbers similar. You know, when we start, when we start, you know, reevaluating where this is at, it's about, in my mind, it's about balance. And with the, with the increase, fire danger, with PSPs, with the traffic from Apple Hill, with the traffic from the, from, after Apple Hill, the Christmas trees, it's just, it's just one thing after another that we are, that is impacting our entire town. And this isn't, you know, these, these, these street closure events aren't just Main Street. They are, they affect businesses all over town. They affect the businesses on Broadway. They, they affect the residents from this side of the street that want to get to that side and vice versa. They, and I still want to, I want to hear from public safety on what their perceived impact is. I think that's an important piece of the conversation. And also important piece of the conversation is acknowledging, you know, how important the whole idea of fire safety is in the fall. And that is, it is what it is. I mean, I don't want to leave it unsaid. We don't need to have it rule the day. We don't need to be in fear of it completely, but we, at least in my opinion, need to acknowledge it. And, and so, you know, the impact is citywide. It affects every, every single household just about in this greater region and all the businesses. And, and there's also the effect that this is what a community does. And this is what a town does, is we put on events and we support our local organizations and we support the businesses and we support our society. We are not a static town. We grow, we expand, we come up with new things and new ideas. And it's really embraced with so much of our community. So, you know, I don't want to negate the fact of how important, you know, the days, you know, there's so many people that like the car shows. And they are just, you know, people think that's a true family event. You can go down and, maybe not all the wives, but most of the guys. And, and so it is a balancing act between respecting the rest of our community and balancing against with the events that we put on for that 50% that like that one event. And, and I think, I think we've reached a fairly decent balance here. I think that people have acknowledged it. I'm kind of agreement on the car show part piece, but that's where I'm at. So thank you.
Thank you. And I know Vice Mayor Tom has brought up public safety's position on this. And I, so I, again, I know I asked earlier if you had any comments, but if you do have any comments, again, you know, we'd certainly appreciate your, we know what you think in terms of street closures and this time of the year, what it means for both the fire department and the police department. So, I don't know. Chief Cordiero, if you want to go first?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anytime there's a closure on the Main Street, it does bring us to a heightened level of awareness. Main Street Placerville is one of our largest target hazards for fire protection. However, when we do have those street closures, we do work hand-in-hand with PD and we have alternative plans in place. As far as the impact to the medic units and whatnot, that information is given out, we give it to our dispatch center and they send it out county-wide so that not only are agencies aware of the closures and the potential impacts, but the surrounding cooperating aware of the closures and the potential impacts, but the surrounding cooperating agencies are also aware. So there is an impact, but we understand that the city does need to have these type of events and we plan accordingly for them.
Thank you. Chief Ortega?
So just to agree with Chief Cordero, the only other thing is, we get frustrated, people that clog up our nine-one-one lines that call up because they're blaming us for the backup on Highway Fifty, or the backup on Main Street, or they can't get here, or they can't get there. As Councilmember Acuna said, it can take thirty minutes to go, you know, half-mile. So that impacts our comm center. Our officers know alternate ways to get around the city when, when it's an emergency. But our biggest concern is the area in and around Marshall Hospital and keeping those roads cleared for the ambulances. And we do work as hard as we can with the Fire Department, but it's always a concern. I don't have the data in front of me to suggest that it slows people down, but if you have to go all the way around the city to get to the hospital, I don't think people can do the math there.
Thank you. But...
I just, could I add something?
Yeah, sure.
I know Councilmember Acuna was talking about the car show, and it, again, it has nothing to do with the good that they do with their money. It was that it was, we were trying to get these events off Main Street in the summertime, and the car show always is at a crucial time in the summertime. So it involves, so I, I don't know if, we, and nighttime, the nighttime one didn't seem to affect it, but again, maybe the car show, this is one of those things where maybe we have to work with them and find, maybe they could have it at different hours. I, I don't know, but we're trying to address this Highway Fifty thing. So that was the main, it hasn't, again, nothing to do with the good that they do and the money that they raise. It's just, it's the whole thing, and it's a Sunday afternoon. So, I just wanted to say that again.
Yeah, and I, I think I, looking back on Brew Fest as well, I mean, I remember going to Wine, to the Wine Smith when Kay was still there and, you know, we, everyone would bring back what they had left afterwards, and, you know, it gets split up amongst all the people that, that poured. So it's, it's changed a lot over the years and it's grown a lot, which is, which has been great, but it's also caused other issues for us that we're now facing tonight, which is, how do we balance our public safety, the businesses throughout our city, with these public events that we all love to attend and take part in, but also realizing that there are consequences to, to having these? And so it's a, you know, it, it's a policy question for us to have to undertake tonight. I wanted a little bit more information on the costs, so just in terms of the fee package. Were those, I know we sort of were putting those together, I don't think those are set in stone, but I did have a question about the seven-hundred-and-fifty on the vehicle barricades. And, I don't know if that's high or not, but just wanted to get some clarification on that. And then, you know, from, from my perspective, in terms of what the profits are going to be, or the per-hour cost, I mean, these are, I think these are good starting points. I think we need to have further discussion on this. I don't know that I feel ready to make a, a decision on, you know, what that cost is ultimately going to be. I'd like to have a little bit more conversation with the groups, myself, just to get a sense. But I do think that, like waiving the fee for, you know, for not, if there's no, if there's no profit in it, like the, you know, Hangtown Days, or whether it's the car shows or Christmas, or for our parade, I mean, that just kind of makes sense. We're not here to whack our, our, our clubs for a fee. So I, I just want, I don't feel comfortable yet making a decision on that portion of it. I feel comfortable with the list of, of events that we have here. I do think, because it's February, that this is probably a 2021, you know, fee structure that we're looking at and letting people know well in advance that we're going to have a new fee structure in place. I think we should, my, my opinion is we should stick to our current schedule, at least for now, on this. But if I could, on this one, I just wanted to get, so, just wanted to get a little bit more information on the, the cost breakdown. I think, I, I kind of agree with Michael Friend, just having like a one-fee thing where everything's sort of included, unless there's some, some other special thing, but I don't know if it's Terry or Cleve on the, on the cost, or if you could just break it down a little bit more for me.
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to go back to the application packet that was included. It appears that the strikeouts didn't transfer into the copy, so I just wanted to let the council know what the actual changes were to the contract that people look at right now. And the biggest part is, under the, the set of fees, I think it's on the, about the fourth page after the application where it's all in bold, the thing that we did add to that was under street closures, it says is calculated by the City C number twenty-six. That was one addition, and then actually number twenty-six was added in there. And that's the section that talks about street closure fees, man vehicular barricades, electrical use, and street sweeping. Now, the, the cost that I pulled these from was actually a 2010 memo from the former Community Services Director. This has been thought about and talked about for a decade, and I found a lot of his old memos and notes. And so, these costs are pretty much taken from that 2010 memo, but it's, it's worth discussing that, what the vehicular barricade, it is not just parking a couple of cars, it's actually making sure that we've got vehicles that are strong enough to meet a, a standard that the Police Department is trying to follow as far as federal standards for stopping a vehicle. And those have to be manned in order to be able to move them quickly for an emergency. And that means that we have to have public safety folks that are at those barricades. And if you look at number twenty-five, and it says the current 2017 rate, so you can see we're, how, how far behind in our edits here, for an officer sixty-six fifty per hour, you can consider some of these street closures at ten-plus hours, do the math with a couple of officers at each end, and see exactly what those costs are. So those would be my comments back about the, the overall cost. I think you could try to do a lump sum cost if you, there's a lot of variables with these events. Some are closures for half a day, some are, start early in the morning, and some events have even tried to discuss closing the night before. So, those are the kind of things that my department looks at and I try to wrestle with as far as costs go, but there, there are definitely costs incurred. The electrical fee, we have had a lot of, a lot of vandalism for our electrical outlets, and they, they don't really serve a purpose for us, being out on Main Street. They're really for special events, and the amount of times we've had to call electricians to fix these prior to events is, is quite, quite numerous. So those would be my comments back about the costs.
Thank you, Terry. Okay.
Mayor, could I ask?
Yes.
Terry, I don't know if you know this, or maybe Mike from the Lions Club. What is the proposed date for the car show in the spring?
May seventeenth.
I don't know if you have that, Terry.
I don't have it right in front of me, but it was...
Destroy your information.
Sure.
Yes, the car show was scheduled for May seventeenth.
May seventeenth, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And we moved the August show up to the twenty-seventh to accommodate the traffic issues, because the car show was originally in September, and we moved it into August, and we can move it again. I just need enough time to contact nine-hundred people that, with cars, to tell them where, what we're doing.
Understood. Thank you.
Couple of things. I think that we should have a date certain each year that we have events submitted to the city. And then we should also, that should be approved by the city each year. And it would be, and once it gets going, it would be just a, well, who knows, if it's a quick meeting or not, but, but, but there should be some consideration for ongoing ones, some of the, I did some research back in the day, and the cities tend to, at least the cities that I talked to tended to have a slate, and that was it, and they went forward with that. The other thing is, is I think we should do like, you know, we should, at the very least with Hangtown Days, the car shows, trick-or-treat, because those are city events and festival lights and Christmas, those are parades. The two that are, the bigger, more, slightly more for profits should be, now that's between the city, I, I would leave it up to the city, but you also have the, how we address their fees. I don't think that should go unanswered, at least not today.
So you're, just to clarify, you think we should have an answer on their fees tonight?
Yeah, even if it's, you know, since it's the first year and we haven't really imposed this, and it's, it's coming up a little late in the season, you know, fifty percent or something to that effect.
Can I ask, Mr. Mayor, can I ask Mr. Zeller?
Yes.
Have all these organizations already submitted using the, the current application?
Yes, they have.
And was there a fee structure on that application?
There was not. That's part of the reason for the, for the discussion of the motion section of the staff report. We, we want to make sure that we're being fair to those events, that it's, it's hard enough to try to pull off a, a street closure event without having to jump right into looking at these additional fees. And we are aware, a lot of folks have to do their budget planning way ahead of time.
So we would use the existing methods, then, for establishing the fee?
For this year.
For this year, for the 2020 event?
Right.
And I think we, again, we need to take this in stages. Everybody's already, you know, thought about this in November, December last year and submitted it, which is great. That's wonderful. And so, I think it's fair to, you know, recognize that this is a change that we're all going to make together, so we, it wouldn't, I don't feel it would be fair to try and say, okay, we're going to now charge seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for this and five-hundred for our police car, and you don't want to know how much we'd have to charge you for a fire truck. So, that would be, you know, that would not be fair. So we'll, we'll go forward with using the existing applications, get these dates hammered out, and then we'll work together to develop what we want to see in 2021. I like Dennis's idea of having that rolling out every year at some point, that, again, is agreed upon by the community that's involved in these, these, these events. You know, just the folks that are here tonight, and sitting down with our city staff and saying, okay, these are our dates, twenty-one, and, okay, Terry would be able to then say, okay, this is going to be the expected costs. What do you need, what don't you need, from the city? So you could check that off. You're right, we're not going to finish tonight, but I think we can certainly recommend for the balance of this year, and that we will have a task to do moving forward.
Councilmember, I almost sounded like a motion.
And I would be happy to make that my motion. And I would include the May seventeenth car show sponsored by the Placerville Lions Club.
And to just reiterate, that would be a motion for the same fee schedule?
Yes.
For this, for 2020, adding the May seventeenth car, or car show, and then working to have a dates, some dates certain as we move forward, and then further discussion on what the ultimate fees will be for 2021.
With tonight's input, asking Mr. Zeller and Mr. Morris to work on bringing this back to the council in the future, so that we can refine what the fee and application will be for 2021. And taking a note from Dennis, that probably should be something we need to conclude in October.
Right.
So that all these organizations have October of this year, thinking about next year. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
I mean, that task is on us to get that done.
I just wanted to make sure everyone understood the motion, so if there's a second on that motion.
Is there a second? I'll second that.
Would you say the motion again, please?
Sure. I would go ahead and recommend that we use the list as presented to us this evening, adding the more, the May seventeenth second car show, using the current application and fee scheduling, and that before October of this year, the council and staff and the organizations involved prepare a draft 2021 permitting, event permit and fee schedule.
Can I request one addition to that?
Sure.
Okay. So currently, there's a sixty days prior to event on the application, and the, the application must be submitted to the Community Service Department at least sixty days prior to the event and as early as one year. Annual events are encouraged to book early. So, I'm, my thought is that this is it for the year, and not this applica, because, because you're talking about using the existing applications. The application also implies that they could, somebody else could apply for...
No, that would be the intent, so, yeah, I'd be happy to clarify the motion, that that would be, that would apply to the events this year.
In finality.
Yeah. These, this is the list.
I have a question or comment on this motion. If we're going to add the May seventeenth car show, I would really like to see the other one spaced a little bit further from Winderlust, because two...
We've heard that input from the Lions, and they're shaking yes, they can, nine-hundred?
Just two closures?
No, I, yeah, you...
So, May seventeenth, that, because I was going to say, he, he offered though to change if we saw fit.
Yeah, the one we want to change is the August...
It's the...
Right, because you have one on the twenty-seventh and then another one on the twenty-nine, Winderlust is the twenty-ninth and...
No, I was talking about the one that Mark is proposing adding a car show.
Right.
In May.
Right.
Is that, is May okay?
I think that date is okay. It's the one in August that is two days away from Winderlust that they're saying we should, Karen's saying we should change.
That's, we're talking about two different things. I'm talking about Highway Fifty.
Right, right.
And so is May, because...
It's better than October.
Well, the gentleman said that if that wasn't for, you know, if we didn't approve of that, that he also would be willing to talk about another Sunday that would be better.
I, I think, the only thing that would be better would be moving it earlier and then trying to move it earlier at this late, late date, maybe an issue.
That's what I was, that is what I was questioning him.
Then he has to call eighteen-hundred people. That's a lot of phone calls. We've, we're pulling the calendar up.
You can, you can come back up, as we've asked for clarification.
I didn't want to shout from the audience. I, I can move the car shows, I don't want to move the May show further earlier into May because of weather concerns. These cars are not cars that you drive out on the street.
Right.
You'd love to hear the phone calls I get when these guy, when it starts to rain or possibility rain, and they tell me about their chrome underspissed pennies, and then they tell me about what they're going to do if I do do this. The other thing I ha, I'm against in the August show is hot August nights and a couple of other shows, but I can move that one earlier into the, into the summer.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that's about a four o'clock to seven o'clock?
Yeah.
Or, or to your guys, a three o'clock to seven.
Well, and actually, you know, and you, you highlighted that, Vice Mayor, is that I tell them five-thirty, they show up at four-thirty, and I, I kind of play a game with them. But they're all vying for their perfect spot, and they're all doing their thing. So, it is a game. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
So we, sounds like we can move it up at least a week or two away from...
From Winderlust.
The Winderlust.
Yeah, I'm okay if, if the Lions Club and our, and Terry wants to work on that outside of the meeting, they can figure out that date separately, but...
Did you second my motion?
I'll resecond it.
Well, we've changed this.
Well, I changed it, and he rec, he...
Yeah, I think we had a, all right, so we have a, a first and a second. Any further discussion on this one?
I'll support this motion for these events for 2020. For 2021, I would like to see probably narrowing the car show down to one, but this gives them time to choose which date they prefer and do the marketing for that. Or, or moving one of the car shows to another location, like Lions Park, or, you know, some other park in the city, that might be appropriate, just to keep the street closures to a minimum.
Put it along the trail.
Or along the...
Cleve wanted to encourage more usage of the trail.
It's true. Well, and I think this will give us...
I could see those cars on the trail.
No, no, the paves part of the trail, of course.
Well, this will give us more opportunity as well to have a little bit more discussion on the 2021 finality, of what that list would look like. Because we do, I mean, we, the reality is, we have a lot of traffic that is clogging up all of our streets, we've had, we've had... reality is, we have a lot of traffic that is clogging up all of our streets. We've had multiple discussions about Clay Street and Coleman and other places. We all know that when we close down Main Street, it exacerbates the problem. So there is a real issue and problem with that that we do have to face as a council, even though, you know, we all love these events. And so we'll have that discussion in terms of what it ultimately looks like. But I think we have a first and a second.
I just want to express my appreciation for PDA for working on these events. I know that they, you know, have spent a lot of time toiling over events over the years and to actually come to an agreement with the city and the events that are going on. I just wanted to express my appreciation for that as well. Because I know that wasn't, not an easy conversation, I'm sure.
Absolutely. And for everybody that's participated, you and Patty, for sitting on the ad hoc committee as well and really putting in the work beforehand to get us to this point. So.
Mr. Mayor, can I add one?
Yes.
Comment. And it seems obvious that we all realize that this is a good thing and we're kind of choking on our own success. And that's a good problem to have. And we often throw the fairgrounds around, but I've never had a conversation with anybody at the fair board or, well, maybe a brief conversation with the fair manager. But maybe as part of this second phase of our, of looking at 2021 events, we, a council member, maybe Terry, should sit down with Cleve, from, somebody from the fair board, to let them know that for these events and for Placerville to be safe and successful, we have to find a better venue or, you know.
I think that's an excellent idea that we have that meeting with the fair board and staff and, you know, explore those possibilities. Because, yeah, I mean, because their prices are, I do know their prices are not inexpensive, but we should have that conversation with them. So with that, any other comments?
Thank you.
All right, let's, let's do a roll call vote on this one.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Riley?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
All right, that passes 5-0. Why don't we take a quick 10-minute break? Thank you, everybody. Item 12.1, adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Eldorado County Fire Protection District to study the potential for a joint use facility for police and fire services and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the same. And authorize the city manager in coordination with Eldorado County Fire District Fire Chief to negotiate a consulting services agreement for a joint use facility needs assessment in the amount not to exceed 30,000 with the city share of that said agreement not to exceed 15,003. Approve a 15,000 budget appropriation from the general fund on sign of fund balance for said consulting services agreement. And Mr. Morris has this item.
Thank you, Mayor. This item, I think you're all somewhat familiar with. We've been trying to, the city, over many years, going back to at least 2000 that I'm aware of, tried to remodel, update, and add on to our current police facility. There's a real need there. And if you need to go take a tour with our police chief, he will outline what some of those needs are. But we've been trying to find ways to do that, have not been able to for various reasons. Recently, in some discussions we had with, originally with Chief Ogan and now with Chief Cordero, we talked about the possibility of creating a joint facility. It's been done in many communities up and down the state and throughout the United States where police and fire share a facility. There's certain economies of scale that can be realized through combining perhaps reception services, conference rooms and those type things that could be, not need, no need to duplicate those if they're done in the right way. So we think there are some, is some potential to realize some savings overall by doing that. One of the first steps we need to do is determine what our needs are. Attached to your staff report tonight, you have a needs assessment that was done for our police department, originally done in 2002 and updated in 2014. Obviously, that's five, almost six years ago now. Would need to be updated again. And then adding the needs for the fire service to that and looking what their needs would be 20 to 30 years out, we'd identify that horizon and then develop potential options for facilities that could serve the community for the, for the future, anyway. So what we've put together, working with Chief Cordero, we've put a draft MOU together that will allow us to, to perform a study. We would prepare an RFP to send out, to solicit consultants that would do this needs assessment for us. This would be the first phase. We've estimated that could be up to 30,000. The estimates that I've got are between 24 and $30,000 to do that study. And it would basically give us the information, similar information to what you see in the report that was done just for our police department in 2014. So that is the type document that we would like to come up with. Based on that, we can then go into what I proposed as Phase Two, which would be the funding cycle of the project. We would look at all options for funding that are available to us and come back with recommendations to the city council and to the fire board of how we might can move forward with that. Obviously, that's going to be a ways down the road after we do the feasibility study. We would then move forward the other processes in looking at design and then construction, assuming that we can identify the funding to go forward with it. So what we're asking of you tonight is to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Eldorado County Fire Protection District. It's my understanding they have a meeting on the 20th, correct, Chief Cordero? And their board will consider the same MOU for approval at that time. Assuming it is approved, I will work with Chief Cordero, identify, put together an RFP. I have some samples already that we can use, that we would put out to various firms to submit proposals to do the study for us. So that's the basics of it. We know that there's a lot of work to be done. Obviously, we do not know how we will pay for the ultimate facility, and that's going to be the heavy lift, I think, in this whole process. But we do think there's some real possibilities by making it a joint facility, some fire together. Generally, a lot of agencies look favorably on that and may give us extra points in being able to apply for grants and potential loans that we might need to look at funded in the future. So that'll answer any questions you might have. Or Chief Cordero can also answer questions.
Thank you, Cleve. Thank you, Chief. Questions for staff at this point? I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Oh, wait, yep. I almost closed it.
Have to be a little quicker.
You need to sit in that first seat, I keep telling you.
I know, I know. Sue Rodman, Placerville resident, and we have talked about this for years and years and years, at least since 2000. And I, I have toured the police facility, and I do think it is not adequate. And I've toured Station 25 in Placerville, and it seems to me that it's not really adequate either for the fire people. And I know that one of the biggest fire truck is located on the side of our police station. So it seems to me like we're on the way of getting consolidation done anyway, and it would be really smart to do this if we can find a space in Placerville to do it. That may be one of the heavy lifts to do too. But I think this is a good thing to get started and actually do something with it instead of just talk.
Thank you, Sue. Any other comments? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council for discussion.
A question for Cleve.
Yes.
Cleve, the 2014 study, did it include the fact, had we purchased the property next door when that was done?
We had not. That happened since then.
So that has happened.
And that's why you see in there on that study, it notes the need to purchase additional property. That was based on our anticipation that we would purchase that property at that time.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes.
A little background, during the second half of my term last year, this approached by then Chief Lloyd Ogan and his idea to bring county fire down to Main Street to bring, or to Placerville, their administration operation. That kind of began there. And working with Cleve and some folks at the county, we started to explore that idea. And as Chief Ogan left and Chief Cordero entered the scene, we had gotten to the point where we'd had a number of meetings with both agencies. We had police and fire trucks everywhere and toured a lot of different things and had a lot of very frank conversations between command staff at the police department and command staff at county fire. Both committed to, at the end, we all realized it was an opportunity to bring both organizations utilizing their unique abilities for funding, et cetera, and create a true public safety building. I can assure Sue that Station 25 is absolutely unacceptable in today's standards, busiest fire station in Eldorado County. And we know all the problems that we've had with the police station, and it has been identified for decades as being inadequate. And it's, I want to commend Cleve, the folks at the county that assisted us, and both chiefs and past Chief Ogan for his efforts in kind of taking this from one spot and having the open-mindedness and broad thoughts to encompass, I have to say, great enthusiasm, Commander Wren's enthusiasm for a combined fire-police station. He starts throwing out savings such as shared training facilities, shared clerical staff, shared parking facilities, all on that existing property that we now own. We then started to delve into the staging, said, well, who could go where while they tore this down? And would it be better to remodel? Knocked out. So again, thank you very much to all the folks that have been involved in to this point. There's been a lot of really great open discussion go on. And I think this is a real opportunity for both organizations to be in Placerville and have a brand new police station and a brand new Station 25 for 50 years, 50-year building use. With that, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
A second.
I have some additional comments on this. Thank you.
We have a first and a second, but absolutely.
Thank you. On this particular issue, I find myself struggling with the idea, mostly because I, you know, once, at one time in the past, I was on the fire board and we, our, the financial outlook of the fire district was that they were going to be doing, they would be entering deficit spending in 2022. Does that sound about right?
I believe that was accurate a couple of years ago when we were back on the board.
Is that still?
Not at this point.
Okay. And I, and so there, but at the same time, we, the, we, I keep saying we for county fire, but I'll go with we because I'm still in your district. So we, as the county fire, we're also dealing with unfunded liabilities, much like the city is. And, and then the city is, you know, our financial outlook is, you know, we're going to be paying off our city hall and that money looks like it will be allocated for future costs will be allocated towards also unfunded liabilities of the city. And then I look at the fact that, and please don't get me wrong, I love all you guys over there and I want to support you. I just want to talk this through because I, I struggle with this. We also will be dealing with unfunded liabilities. We own our fire station, we own our police station. I'm not saying they're beautiful. I'm not saying they even put lipstick on a pig. They're just not, they're not, they're not in the best shape, but we own them and we're not making payments on them. So we own buildings, we're going into what I would consider a financially challenging time with both what I would consider fire and city. And we're doing a study, and the last one sat on the shelf for, well, started in 2002, was updated in 2014, collecting dust.
Right.
So where are we at with this particular one where, as we go forward, is there, I mean, because I would look to you guys, and I, and I trust you guys, to really take a hard look and determine whether there's real viability in doing this. And if there is, that's great, but that, I don't feel that yet. I don't, I haven't seen it. It hasn't been given to me that there's true viability. Now, I understand you got to have something ready in order to take advantage of these, these grant monies. But even so, if we had a matching grant of 10%, which is a really generous matching grant, somewhere 20%, I don't know where we would come up with a million dollars in the city. And I don't know about the fire and that, I really don't. So you guys may have it in your, in your bucket. But, but so I just look at this matching monies and funding and how we're going to do that. And so to spend 15,000, you know, on the big scheme, it's not a bad idea to be ready if we can do it. But the big question is, can we do it?
Is that what the study would entail?
Well, the study would give us the cost of what we're potentially looking at for a new, for a new station, combined station, as well as does the dirt that we have now, does it work at that location? But it won't, it may touch on some potential funding sources, but no, it won't, it won't tell us how to get to, you know, the Yellow Brick Road.
Where to find, where to find the money.
Where to find the money. No, it's going to be incumbent upon us and fire authority to find that money or to, you know, make a commitment to funding that. So Dennis is absolutely right. I mean, we, we're going into this with a little bit of blind faith because I don't think anyone has any ideas. I mean, we have some ideas in terms of where we could find the money, but certainly nothing definitive at this point. So we're, we're basically doing this on the basis that either we make the commitment that we're going to find this, or that we think there's a good possibility that there's money out there somewhere. I think that's probably fairly accurate.
Yeah, I just maybe add to that. I've struggled with the same questions, Councilmember Thomas. And it's a good one because a few years ago, I know, I went to Dave Warren and said, you know, in 2021, we'll be freeing up that funding and we can put it into some things such as facilities. Unfortunately, expenses have caught up to us. And now I know that those, those funds are probably not going to be able to go into facilities because there's operational needs that those are going to have to go to. From the other side of it, though, I think I recognize that we cannot continue to just say, we're going to have to limp along with, with buildings that are, in some areas, I will say woefully inadequate. And there's some areas that I have some real concerns. I won't speak for the fire station, but I will say that his, the fire station, I believe, is about 20 years older than our police station is. And so there's some areas in our police station that I have some real concerns with that.
I agree.
We, we need to find a solution for. And what that solution is, and it may come out of this study, we may come out of it and say, we cannot go to a full rebuild, a new, new facility, but we need to do these modifications and a much cheaper option that is identified and, and, you know, we move on from there. But I think this will give us some answers in terms of what, what ultimately we should be looking at doing. And then we go into the next phase, which is the funding phase, and we identify what we can or can't do. And it may, again, come back and say, we can't do any of the options that are identified in there. But we definitely need to do these things to make sure that we're providing the bare minimum of service and facilities for our public safety officials. So.
The flip side of that conversation is, I'm learning in government that you have to plan at least 10 years out for any project so that.
Many times, that's true.
Are prepared for the project when the opportunity arises. So there's that piece as well. It's just, it's a little bit of a reality check for me in terms of if we're going to, I mean, because, you know, money is hard for us to come by. And so to invest in this, I just, I'm looking to the future and where county fire is and where the city is, and we have that opportunity. So thank you for listening to me.
Chief Cordero, I don't know if you have any comments you want to add to this conversation?
I would just echo the comments of Vice Mayor Thomas, that, yeah, I mean, we are, you know, struggling for finding funds to replace 25, but it has been on our docket for many a year now to replace that. That station was built in 1953, originally as a volunteer fire station.
Right.
Never really intended to have the housing that it does have now. You know, during the 80s, they moved an engine company to there. In the early 90s, we put a medic unit in there. Now we have a chief officer in there. So it's, it's beyond capacity for what it was really intended to. And if you go through the layout of what the crews deal with every day, it's just not a viable facility. We are actively exploring some of the grant opportunities that may be there. I've got a couple of my grant people working on that right now. But, you know, on the, on the fire side, to have that study done, to actually give us a step to build on, to look forward to the future is, okay, what can we do? What is feasible? What isn't? And then finding that alternative source. is feasible, what isn't, and then finding that alternative source for the money, that's going to be the heavy lift. But we kind of need, in my opinion, we need that base document to build off of.
Got it. Chief, do you know, is there any, anything that's come out of the last budget cycle, state budget cycle, in terms of, I know there's been like fire, money for fire in terms of forest, some monies out there, but is there, is there anything to do with infrastructure that you've seen?
The main grant opportunities that we look at is the AFG grant, which is geared towards the fire service and then homeland security monies. There was a grant that came available, I'm not sure if Vice Mayor Thomas was on the board when we were building Station 28. We did apply for that. It was, and 28 did kind of fit into the realm for that. It wasn't chosen for that, unfortunately, but there are, there are some opportunities out there. And I think I would echo City Manager with having a joint facility does open some additional doors as far as potential grant funding as a joint facility.
Thank you. Chief Ortega, any comments?
Just to echo what everyone else has said. And then looking at this document, I looked at this document, I think, not long after I was hired. It's already outdated because there's some things in there that we would need, that we could share. For example, an emergency operations center is something that we both have a need for, and yet it's not in that old plan. So there is some vision to have, to use the land that we already own. As one of you said, we own the dirt, we own the building, and to modify that building. And there's just also some concerns for my staff, my existing staff, that they're getting by with the understanding that, you know, hopefully we can get a bigger building. Because the, for example, the fire engines that are parked in the fire bay, that space I could use to store some other stuff that's outside. These are assets that aren't really weatherproof, but I need to put them indoors. So, for example, one of my budget requests is going to be for a storage unit this coming year, to put some of this stuff indoors. And, yeah, our building is 42 years old, if my math is correct. And we just think that there's some definite cooperation that would go on with, between Chief Cordero and I, we both are adamant that we would work together. We both get along really well. I don't know how the fire chief and the police chief got along 42 years ago, but we'll set the stage for the future and get along.
I was just going to ask you.
So I wasn't around, obviously.
Thank you, Chief. Well, and I will say, I mean, there's one truism in all of this, and that is, building something never gets cheaper. So the longer we put off looking for solutions, the only, more expensive it's going to be. And that's, that's a constant. So we're never going to see a decrease in the cost of a building. So I will think, I do think that's, you know, one thing we have to take into consideration is, it's always going to be more expensive if we wait. So, do we have a, do we have a?
I made a motion.
I'll make another.
We have a second. Okay, that's right. We've had quite a bit of, so I've, I forgot. Okay, well, let's call, roll call vote.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 12.2, adopt a resolution approving a $60,300 budget appropriation in federal highway safety improvement program funds for the Broadway sidewalk project. And this is Ms. Neves.
Just one moment there, please.
Ah, yes.
I am going to recuse myself as this project is actually right, part of it, portion of it is right in front of my property on Broadway. So I will see you guys in a minute.
All right, we will wait for the Vice Mayor to make the way to the secret room in the back.
The cone of silence.
The cone of, yes, exactly. Okay, Ms. Neves.
Thank you, Mayor Saragosa. And, Councilmembers, this item before you approves a budget appropriation in federal highway safety improvement program, or HSIPE, funds for the Broadway sidewalks project. As you know, this project proposes improvements that will complete pedestrian facilities on Broadway from Mosquito Road to Schnell School Road, improving safety within the Broadway corridor. Select roadway and utility improvements are also proposed as part of the project. As the project has progressed through environmental and on into design, additional design funding through HSIPE has become available and is approved by the, by Caltrans and is the subject matter of this item before you. The amount of appropriation is $60,300. Approving this appropriation will allow design to continue towards creation of bid documents. Construction funding is programmed for 2021. And given the late hour, that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Nope.
Okay, I'll open it up for public comment.
Sue Rodman, Major L Committee, and I'd like to say yay for our engineering department for keeping this one rolling. It's definitely a wise use of our Major L funds.
Good evening. Evening with the late hour. I want to invoke the duty of put-off four-minute rule, which means five minutes, because I want to make sure that I cover the history of the sidewalk and curb issue for Broadway as it sharply contrasts with Placerville Drive. The way I recall this subject coming up was a number of years ago when an owner of a shopping center on Broadway had a problem because the city wanted to require them to put in the sidewalks and curbs. It could have been done years earlier, but now it's much more costly. That city council member recused herself, and her interests were well protected because sensing the tremendous burden that construction cost, we came up with a solution that night where you'd take money out of a federal grant to come up with the design work for that. Well, that's good. And, and the guy who bought that subdivision, that shopping mall, told me that nobody ever told him about that obligation, so I guess it wasn't done. But now we're talking about doing the same thing, or at least putting out some help to these other people up there. Wonderful. I'm glad you're doing it. But my family paid money out of our pockets to do curb and sidewalk designs for our property on Placerville Drive. And we've been delayed for two years just for a simple grading permit that's required by ADA compliance issues. It's very expensive to start doing work in the winter when you've got rainstorms, to do work on a roof or grounds. But the provision that's holding us up says that the city can assert its claim for an easement with just, like, three months or six months' notice, which would wipe out the parking. Now, why would we spend a few hundred thousand dollars to improve property, make it something that's really attractive, when you could destroy the commercial value for retail? We could just turn it in overnight, kick everybody out, and make it warehouse space. It'll still be just as ugly. So take your pick. Now, when this issue first came up in a different context, I went to John Driscoll, and he looked up some old papers. And all I remember about it, because he and I can't find our copies, but I, it doesn't matter, because what I remember is, we got the green light, we could go forward. So sure enough, I did. I paid money for sidewalk and curb improvements, the design, not paid for by a grant. And by the way, I tried to have been accommodating for common sense, which is that in lieu of that, which shortens our parking, I'd be willing to pay much more money to come up with a common sense solution, which is you go down Green Valley Road, where you've got kids coming up from the, a number of recreation centers down there, and schools, and homes, where it's just not safe to go down Green Valley. But we'll give you the, that sidewalk there, because nobody's going to use the one upstairs. Now, look, right next door is Carl Hagan. Are you going to, are you going to tell him that he can take his parking away because of an easement on just a few months' notice? No. And, and don't give me the insulting explanation that, well, you've got a grading permit, and he doesn't need one. That has nothing to do with it. You're spending more time on this, two years, which is about four times longer than it took you to shove the sourdough thud through. Anything that's important goes through real quickly. This doesn't. So I have to assume it's just like the business of the rule on the pole sign, which took six years and didn't change until I pointed out that, you know, that claim that you treat everybody equally, it's not quite true, because another city council member had a problem with a pole sign, and, Mr. Smith, you were right all along, six years. You think it's going to change overnight just when I ask that question because of coincidence? If you think that, I've got a deed to the Bell Tower to sell you, as soon as the ink dries. So listen, all I'm asking for is common sense, because I raised this the last time, and Mayor Acuna said I'd be meeting with
Kurt, could you wrap up, please?
Well
I think I've given you well over.
You're right. I haven't reached five and a half minutes yet. But listen, just come up with a solution in a week. I've got a ballpoint pen. All you do is you take out that paragraph. It's common sense. You don't need it. But don't tell me it's not personal, because the only other explanation is if it's not, that's not the motive, it's incompetence on a large scale, and I don't think that's true. So just please, between you and the city manager, get out the ballpoint pen and mark that out, so we can go forward, make improvements. In the meantime, don't give me the crap about you care about small
Kurt, could you wrap up, please?
and you want to improve the tax base, because, and
Thank you.
Mayor Saragosa?
Yes, yes.
I wanted to chime in on a few inconsistencies in that information that was just presented, if I could.
Sure.
Speaking regarding the grading permit, there are outstanding items from the applicant that the city is still waiting to get, receive. And so if there's some questions regarding that, we're happy to work with the applicant to get them through the process, as we do with everybody. And, you know, we're available Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and we're happy to help them through the process. The other is regarding what is referenced as a street frontage improvement agreement, and that was regarding on Broadway Plaza. Broadway Plaza has had an SFIA, for short, in place for some time, and that SFIA was called in by city council to the current property owner. That property owner did, feels he did not get any proper notification. However, SFIA's, just so, just for general information purposes, are recorded on the title. So it showed up on the title report. So when the transaction of transfer of property, that was absolutely listed. The other thing, too, is we actually didn't even have funding on this project prior to the sale of that property. So the property exchanged hands, then the city got the funding, then we proceeded with the project. Just for a couple clarifications timeline-wise, because I think it's a little bit important to clear that up. And if you have any other questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any other comments from city council? Do I have a?
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Let me get the Vice Mayor back. All righty. Item 12.3, adopt a resolution ratifying construction contract change orders 32 and 38, and approving contract change orders 39, 43, and 46, in the total combined amount of $132,343.20, with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, for the Western Placerville Interchange Phase II project, and authorizing City Manager to execute the same. And again, this is Ms. Neves.
Good evening. The proposed item before you approves construction contract change orders 39, 43, and 46, in the total combined amount of $132,343.20, with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, for the Western Placerville Interchange Phase II construction contract. As you know, this project has been constructed to improve traffic operations and safety on Highway 50 by building a new off-ramp at Ray Lawyer Drive, a new 150-space park-and-ride lot, which is used quite frequently, pedestrian and bicycle facilities, and roadway improvements to both Ray Lawyer Drive and Fornie Road, including a new signalized intersection. Construction for this project began on February 2, 2018, and it is near the end of construction with only punch lists and final contract closeout items remaining. The description of work for each of the change orders is provided in staff's report with the cumulative amount listed in the action. And the progress to date, including tonight's recommended approval, is still well within the $200,000 aggregate amount under the City Manager's authority for this contract, as approved by council on January 9, 2018. That concludes staff's reports. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any questions for staff?
Nope.
I had one quick one. Rebecca, when do you expect to file a notice of completion on the whole project? How far away from?
We are working through closeout with Caltrans. They have some items that they wanted addressed for improvements that are within their right-of-way. We're working through addressing them. We are a little bit challenged in that process right now, in that there's a bit of, for lack of a better description, a little bit of moving of the goalposts. So we have excellent project documentation, and we are having open discussions with them about that.
Thank you.
Sure.
She's so diplomatic.
Very, yes, very diplomatic. Do I have a question? No. I will go ahead and open this up for public comment. All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to city council.
I'll move for approval.
Second?
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 12.4, adopt a resolution approving an increase in the traffic impact mitigation fees equivalent to the change in Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index from December 2018 to October 2019, effective March 14 of 2020. And again, Ms. Neves.
Thank you. The proposed item before you this evening is to increase the TIM fees in accordance with Section 8-15-8 of the city code, which includes the provision that TIM fees may be adjusted in January 1 of each year by a percentage equal to the inflation rate of construction costs for the prior year. This inflation rate is based upon the Engineering News Record Construction Cost Index. Most recent TIM fee adjustment was approved by council on January 8 of 2019 and accounted for a 6.22 rate of inflation, percent rate of inflation at that time. Since the last adjustment, inflation has increased by 1.25%. The proposed fees supporting that increase are summarized in the table in staff's reports. As per the staff report, you may notice that the city fees still remain less than the county fees, save for one item, minor commercial. The reason for this is the county's program is a residential project-focused program. It would stand to reason that residential development does generate the most traffic impact because they will travel the furthest to services and goods, and for all their commercial retail needs, reflecting the spread-out or rural nature of the county. The city, however, is much more dense in nature, with its land use and impacts to traffic are triggered more by minor commercial uses, hence why the fee is so much higher. This matter will also be compounded once SB 743 is implemented, which, as you may recall, focuses on vehicle miles traveled over the current method that focuses on level of service. Should council approve this item, the new fees would go into effect in 60 days. Any applications received after the close of business on March 13 of 2020 will be subject to the new TIM fees. Additionally, you may recall, a TIM fee program update was approved as part of the 2016-2017 adopted CIP budget process with an initial budget of $135,978. Staff has prepared a draft request for proposals to commence with the study, and will come back to council at a later date as that effort progresses. Staff is also working closely with the El Dorado County Transportation Commission with regards to implementation of SB 743 that I mentioned earlier as well. A lot of these items are tied to the county traffic model, which is currently underway for an update. And once the traffic model gets updated, then we can implement SB 743, and then we can implement the TIM fee program update. So there's a little bit of the horse needing to go before the cart on this. But that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions?
I do.
Yep.
And you explained it, but I still don't think I understand it. I'm, I'm talking about the minor commercial, and I questioned it the last time.
Yes.
What's minor commercial? What type of business is a minor commercial?
I mean, the I mean, the business uses for minor commercial are listed and defined within the general plan, but mostly it's your small shops and your small restaurants and things like that.
Okay, so, there is a big difference between our fee and the county. And I brought up that due to the current vacancies and everything that we've got all over this town, and the, that I'm reading in the paper of all the new development that's going on, just Missouri Flat Road, just a few blocks away, how much money are we talking about, or maybe you don't have any idea, I don't know, but that would make a person, in other words, would, would the difference in these fees make that much of a difference if a person deciding not to build or do business in the city versus going to the county, if they had a minor?
Well, I mean, as far as regarding would it impact a business owner's decision?
Correct.
When you're talking about funding and paying for improvements, my experience with all developers and all project and property owners is that, yes, absolutely, they do look at cost of items. However, the reason for the difference is actually tied to the previous TIM fee program update. There was a nexus that basically studied the area of Placerville and land uses, and it basically weighted the minor commercial properties, because we do have so many. They're more trick generating versus, you know, from the county's perspective, if you have somebody living out in rescue and they want to go to Home Depot, they will travel further miles to get to Home Depot, and that is where the county's TIM fee would then be imposed upon land development for housing. Does that make sense?
It does, and yet I'm still questioning the economic impact of, you know, decision-making.
Right, yeah. I will say that the fees that have been adopted when they were, when the original TIM fee study was done, these are, I believe, it was about $30,000, and the fee that council at that time adopted out of consideration for the recession and everything else was about $7,000. So, again, this is-
I remember that.
Yeah, this is an inflationary cost. So, to be perfectly blunt, the fees that we have even now to this day with all these incremental inflationary increases still don't fund the needs of the projects that are identified in the TIM fee program.
Okay.
And we even looked at a couple options. We looked at one option where it was everything and the kitchen sink, and it was about $160 million at that time. And then we actually adopted fees that were grade below that, where we basically said, "All right, here's the actual projects that we absolutely have to do." And that was down to $135 million from $160. And then from there, we actually adopted fees that were less than a third of the overall estimated cost. So.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Does, does the Nexus study, will that talk or address various economic impacts on decision-making processes and give the city options as to how to go forward?
We can certainly include that in our TIM fee update, sort of like a Cliff's Notes to how we got here, and some recommendations and some, you know, thought process suggestions for policymaking, essentially.
Yeah, what I'm just looking at is if we could, you know, thoughtful process on how we're, you know, much like the county did-
Yes.
-in terms of how they did, and I don't know if they were very thoughtful about it or not, because I wasn't there, but to take a thoughtful process about how we're doing these individual TIM fees and how it affects our TIM fee program. And so, with that, I wouldn't jump into making any big changes at this time, but look forward to those-
Right, yeah, a proper study needs to be completed. And as I mentioned before, you know, because the city is surrounded by county connecting roads, the county traffic model is absolutely essential for us to proceed. So, I know that the county is working very hard on it, and we just, when it's finished, we'll get it, and then we can utilize it for our program as well.
What's, what's the, is there a timeframe on when EDCTC or will get the results, or?
We're hoping by the end of this year. Traffic models are very involved, especially a county-wide one, yeah.
Okay. So, we're looking at mid-2021, before we realistically probably would have-
I would love to say sooner, but I think conservatively, that's a good number to go with.
So, our new model will be on VMT?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any further questions?
I'll move approval of the item.
I'll second.
Did I?
Did we go public comment?
I was going to say-
I think you did. Did he?
I have, I don't think I have.
No.
No, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for public comments.
Oh, that's okay, we have a first and a second on the floor.
We've been doing that all night.
Any comments? Seeing none, all right, we'll bring it back to the council, and we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, item 12.5, adopt a resolution approving contract amendment number two, and then amount of zero, and issue of notice to proceed, number three, with Duberry Drake Hagelin, Duberry the new name, for the Placerville Drive Bicycle and Pedestrian Facility Improvements Project, in the amount of $35,716.83, and authorizing the city manager to execute the same, and approving $510,000 budget appropriation in federal congestion mitigation air quality improvement program, CMAC funds for said project. And again, Ms. Neves.
Thank you. The proposed item before you approves a no-cost amendment to the existing Duberry-Drake Hagelin contract for Placerville Drive Bike and Ped project, and funding appropriation in the amount of $510,000 in congestion mitigation and air quality funds. As you know, the planned project will provide complete bicycle and pedestrian facilities in a safe manner for Placerville Drive from Armory Drive to the Highway 50 undercrossing. The project is progressing through the environmental review and approval process, and the proposed amendment will allow some key tasks to move forward in this schedule in order to environmentally clear and evaluate a more complete project concept, especially items related to right-of-way. I will chime in that on Wednesday of last week, we actually did a complete site walk with the design and environmental team, and this is an iterative process of looking at the impacts to right-of-way, and the design team has been directed to minimize frontage impacts to every parcel that it touches. So, you know, it's, projects, not just a project, it's an experience, and an experience includes showing consideration to every business on Placerville Drive. So, but that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Questions for staff? None at this point? Okay, I will open it up for public comment.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident and driver of Placerville Drive. And I am really happy to see that in this project includes that horrible bridge to replace that bridge. It's dangerous, and it needs to go. I have seen pedestrians and bicycles standing at that K-rail, waiting for the traffic to clear enough that they could go by, and that's a dangerous situation. That's something that, and I've also seen cars that are so afraid of that K-rail that they're way over, taking their half out of the middle of the road as well, and forcing me to get way over and wait for them to go by, so that I could get through that, that little congested mess. So, I am really happy to see this one move forward. This, to me, is the worst remaining bridge in all of Placerville that we need to do something about.
Thank you, Sue. Any other public comments on this one? Seeing none, bring it back to council.
That bridge has been a bone of contention for years. We've been trying to repair, trying to fix it, so.
Yeah, I'd echo Sue's comments, too. I think I've seen, almost seen quite a few accidents right there, be it with pedestrians or cars that cross over.
If you look at the K-rail, there have been several.
Yes, it's, it's got its battle scars.
I'm really excited about this project. I've walked Placerville Drive with my daughter, and it's frightening, and I've walked that bridge, and it's, it's really frightening, and I see, and I drive that road every day, and I see people trying to walk past that bridge on a regular basis, so.
So, Rebecca, is this, is the bridge then a separate entity?
We, as far as the design contract went, Drake Hagelin and their team were more than qualified to handle the design of not only the bridge, but also the Bike and Ped project. However, it's important to understand that they're on two separate construction funding tracks. Right now, the bridge is funded with Highway Bridge Program funds, as we replaced with Blair's, and is funded on Clay Street as well. And we currently have a scope change into Highway Bridge Program headquarters to actually, what was approved was a four-lane bridge. Now, the issue with that is it's about, it was about an 80-foot wide bridge, which fit within the right-of-way. The problem with that is once you start moving out and away, and you start looking at the overall prism of the right-of-way on Placerville Drive, 80 feet, or 88 feet in some areas, takes out parking on many parcels, and that's not something that we were willing to support. And so, we had our kind of come-to-Jesus moment with what kind of bridge do we actually need to support the improvements that we actually need? So, we're actually, we've submitted already a scope change request with Highway Bridge Program to reduce the width of the bridge from a four-lane bridge to a two-lane bridge with a center median area, and sidewalks and bike lanes on both sides. And that comes at a pretty hefty cost savings to the Highway Bridge Program as well. So, that project is funded through construction, and construction funding is programmed for 2022. As far as the Bike and Ped project goes, right now, we have design and right-of-way and environmental funded through CMAC funds, courtesy of El Dorado County Transportation Commission. And the CMAC funds will get us almost to 90% design. It's such a large corridor that there's quite a few things, and we kind of, you'll see some of the mention of it in the staff report regarding some of the funding, that, you know, we, we never want to take, you know, more than what we actually need, because it would take money away from other projects in the county, too. And so, we did concede to releasing half the funds, actually more than half the funds that we applied for when we were successful in getting the additional design funds, for the greater good of being able to fund other county projects, as the county is a partner of ours. That project does not have construction funding, and it's at about, the construction costs alone, not just the hard costs, just concrete and asphalt, is about 14 million.
Wow.
So, we're, the strategy is, there's a couple ways that we're looking at doing this, is delivering a project shovel-ready to go after aggressively after active transportation program funds. The city's been successful in receiving two rounds of ATP funds. The other strategy is, we actually received, on January 22nd, we received a funding phasing memo that basically helps us build the project in portions and segments, much as we do with larger projects like Western Placerville interchange.
So, one more question.
Sure.
Past history-
Yes.
On that bridge-
Yes.
From two-lane, and that was approved, and then we were told that if we approved that, that depending on the improvements to Placerville Drive in the future, if they were going to widen it, that that bridge would be no longer available for funding. So, I think that's when it was stopped, and started, again, wanted to do it for four lanes. So, where are we on that? I mean, what if the future does show, you know, that we want to widen Placerville Drive?
Well, if we widen Placerville Drive to the full right-of-way width, we dramatically affect several frontages that, at this point, there's, I don't think that there would be a political will in that kind of impact.
Okay. So, even, even if we, I'm going back to that Placerville multimodals-
Yes, yeah, multimodal and then the quarter plan.
And a lot of it had to do with traffic calming and different methods, and all that was addressed. I don't know where that study is. I don't know if it's-
We use that as the-
Is it, is it still being considered, or?
Yeah. I mean, you know, this, we did look at the suggested improvements, and we actually, because of that planning document, it prompted us to look at doing the Bike and Ped project, and the bicycle facilities on Placerville Drive, as they're proposed as part of this project, are actually a separated bike lane, which does present a traffic calming feel to the road.
Okay.
And as far as some of the recommended improvements within that planning document, we've also incorporated.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Because we have to do something to-
It was very helpful.
To slow the traffic down.
Yes.
And a lot of it was, it was not only for safety reasons, but it was also to help the businesses along, you know, to give them, by slowing the traffic down, that they would have more visibility, that people would slow down and take a look at what they're passing, so.
Yeah, if we, but I will, I will use, you know, the right-of-way that was presented in that document, recommended improvements up to the 80-foot width or 88-feet width. And, you know, with that goal in mind, right, of promoting and helping our businesses along Placerville Drive, I'll use the example of Ed's appliances. It would have taken out all of his parking, right up to the front of the building. So, it's not really a feasible approach to that. And again, these, you know, these projects aren't just projects, they're experiences, and what kind of feel do we want on Placerville Drive? And it's, we want it to be inviting, and we want it to have a nice frontage for all the businesses to encourage folks to visit them.
Well, it's a second highway.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, you know, it's, unfortunately, a lot of people are turning off Highway 50 just to use it and go to 49, you know, because, anyway, that's another discussion.
Rebecca, would-
Yes.
Would CTC funds be available for this project, potentially, or no?
Well, CTC funds do include ATP funds.
Okay.
Yeah, so, that's a, like a subset of SB 1, and so, that's actually how we got the pedestrian improvements funded on Upper Broadway, which we would absolutely apply for that. We're about a cycle early. They have a cycle coming out here very quickly, and the project just isn't quite far enough down the road to submit an application for construction. We are progressing nicely, though, through the environmental process.
Okay. And we don't foresee any blowback on going back to a single-lane bridge? I mean, we wouldn't have those, those funds in jeopardy.
Well, so, the irony of that is, you know, I happen to sit on the Highway Bridge Program Committee as one of the league representatives, and one of the things that we talk about religiously at every meeting is how short the funding is on the program. And the cost savings that the city has submitted is, I want to say it's around a million-plus, so it's not something to just kind of ignore. They haven't responded to our scope change, but I'll be following up with the HBP managers this week, actually.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Follow-up clarification?
Yep.
Speaking of that very bridge, did I hear just a little while ago that you said it was scheduled for construction in 2022?
Yes.
So, that's not very far off in the bridge world.
Nope, right.
Okay. Patty, you should be very excited. That's like tomorrow in government time.
Karen and I are super rich.
Congratulations, I didn't realize you had that.
We're very excited.
Because that is a very dangerous bridge.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Second, I did think we were further off. I want to say last year, maybe we were further off, or?
Yeah, we did get pushed a year.
Oh, excellent.
So, every year, the Highway Bridge Program issues out surveys to local agencies, and they say, "Okay, how much do you actually need this year?" And then you do your best estimation as to planning funds, design right-of-way, and environmental funds, and construction funding, and you kind of put in your Christmas list, and some things you're going to get, some things you don't, and sometimes you won't get the full amount, but they'll, they'll call you back and say, "Can you live with $500,000 over the next year as opposed to a million?" And you'll say, "Yeah, you know, we can, we can make that work for the greater good," kind of the same philosophy with the CMAC funds, is, you know, it's, our partners across the state need the money, too.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I'd be happy to make a motion to approve item 12.5.
I'll second that motion.
I have to open up for public comments, too.
Here we go again.
Public, I'll open it up for public comment. Sorry, it's, it's getting late.
You already did.
Already do it? There we go, look at that.
There's a double public comment.
It's a double, no.
He's making up for it, yeah.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? No, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Councilmember Acuna?
Aye.
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Aye.
Okay, item 13, council reports from other agencies. El Dorado County Transit Authority. Councilmember Taylor or Acuna?
We met. Congratulations to you, Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, we have a new vice chair, congratulations.
Everything is moving along smoothly.
All right, EDCTC.
I was sick.
Yeah, we missed you.
I didn't attend.
I didn't attend.
Eric got appointed again.
Yeah, another vice chair.
All right, congratulations.
Congratulations times two.
I think one of the biggest takeaways I had from that meeting was that the Highway 50 Bridge Project up there at Echo Summit is going to be starting on May 8th. It's going to last for about three weeks, and it may or may not go through the Memorial Weekend, for which they will figure out what to do if it does.
Ooh, that'll be fun. And that's a hard closure.
It is a hard closure for that time, yeah. And...
Did these before.
A full closure, isn't that, yeah, that's what I got out of that.
That'll help with the Tahoe traffic.
It will.
That's our first car show.
Good timing.
That'll be interesting, yeah. And then the Highway 50 Hot Spot Study came back with its first draft, and they sent it back for a second draft, and so they expect that to be coming back around somewhere in March, and then they'll be doing the modeling at that point to see what...
I'm excited for that to happen.
So that's about it that I have.
Great. LAFCO.
I think I already reported on what we discussed in January, didn't I?
Yeah.
I think so.
Because I know I talked about the potential fee impacts to the city. Nothing new.
All right, SECOG, only thing new is I'm not on Transportation Committee anymore, I'm now on Policy and Innovation. And part of that was just to help out with the Green Means Go campaign across the street in the legislature, so I got...
Is that a good thing?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, since I'm not on Transportation, it probably makes some sense to move over to the Policy Committee, so I'm happy with it.
Good.
Placerville Fire Safety Council.
Yes, I want to be sure that everybody knows that they will have a fire safe meeting Thursday, the 20th, and the time's been changed just for this meeting only. It's from 6:00 to 7:30 at the Veterans Hall. And I have to say that the Fire Safe Council is very, very active, and they're making a lot of plans, and I'll have more, I think, to report next time after some of those plans are made. But I really, 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 I want to encourage people to come to this meeting if they can. The momentum seems to be slipping, you know? Fire season's over, and we don't, you know, we tend to forget, and we really need the public to stay involved if we want to make this thing a success. So as many people as can, please come Thursday night, 6:00 to 7:30 at the Veterans Hall.
Is there money available for people?
For what?
For people? I mean, is there grant monies and things like that?
Well, those are all the things that are being discussed, and I tell you, we've got a really great fire council, as I think all the fire councils are throughout the county. People are just really, you know, those folks are really involved, and it's a lot of hard work, and all this is volunteer, and we need to support them. So yes, we're looking, there is money, Dennis.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you, Patty. All right, item 14, requests for future agenda items. Anybody have anything? No, staff? All right. City Manager and Staff Reports, item 15.1, receiving file December, Fire Station 25 Run Report, Chief Cordero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your package, you'll see the call volume for Station 25 during the month of December 2019. It's my intention to provide you with this information every month for the previous month. One thing I would point out is the stats that you have there are actually the call volume for Engine and Medic 25, not actually the number of calls generated within the city of Placerville, and the reason being is that all the fire departments on the West Slope participate in what we refer to as drop boundary. So literally on a daily basis, Engine 25 may be on a call, and a subsequent call will come out, which then the next closest unit typically from Diamond Springs will handle that call. So these are actually the calls for those pieces of equipment.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Any questions?
Certainly appreciate the information, Chief.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. Okay, item 16, upcoming items. We have the release of the Spring Street and Mosquito Road public bidding, summer park fee increase, local 39 MOUs, Cedar Ravine Sewer Feasibility Report, zone change for yard fence, I'm looking forward to that one, Pierre, Cedar Ravine Demo Permit Appeal.
Mayor, before you close, I just want to make one correction. I should have done this earlier on Rebecca's, on the TIM fee report. I believe it says in there that those go into effect March 14th. That actually should be April 13th approximately, 60 after the 60-day wait from today. I think that was a carryover from our previous report when we planned it. So I just want to make sure everybody knows those will not go into effect in March, but will be, I think approximately April 13th will be 60 days.
All right, thank you for the clarification, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.